And we have a form established, so welcome everyone to the Budget Finance Committee Room. The committee all is set for the meeting today on April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five at one P M here in the committee room. Welcome to those that are listening online. We'll call this meeting at one twenty P M. And Mr. Taki, did you call? Start a real column.
Budget Chairman of Budget Finance Committee, this is Roethlisberger for the Budget Finance Committee. Twenty fifth Nomination Council Special Meeting for April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. Roethlisberger. Honorable Jeanne Parrish is President. Honorable Carl R Slater. Honorable Paul R Slater is President. Honorable Norman Emby Day. Honorable Norman Emby Day is President. Honorable Emperor Chris McCarthy. Honorable Emperor Chris McCarthy is President. Honorable Cheryl Nausen. Honorable Cheryl Nausen is President. Honorable Lester Cigazi. Honorable Lester Cigazi is President. Madam Chair, you have six members present who constitute part for the special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Taki. That we are going to continue with our proposed agenda today. And I'd like to ask if Lady Lester Gazi can leave some indication today. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Okay. Another time. So that's easy. Can I get on key to the long screen? Today is what I'm showing you. I mean, that. On the. By our religion. Meeting. By its meaning. And welcome to our meeting that we have decided. That's easy. Yeah, I think these are all the situations on the board. But now, the human next time we have a new word. And the human, you need to write the car, because you're not easy. Now, the dog is fast, and he's really. The year. The name. You know, that I need to add in my sheet, so they react to. Actually, that's your point of interest. The base of the data, you can be hard to achieve. Now, the stars will go south, and they keep you, you know, the whole day by you, so. I mean, that you would achieve. And I wish you don't even achieve a ton of that. Based on that, as I said, we're moving on. We should not have had a child that you had to argue on this. But though, Paul, we are ready to achieve that. That justice and competition is there. And they try, and they. Though, I would give us anything that I should. You can not, which is, actually, we are trying to accomplish this. So I certainly want to buy. We have been shooting on the train of course, so it's been silent. Is that your announcement, or is that your announcement?
Again, thank you, our delegate. And the prayer this afternoon. Um, we are going to continue on with our proposed agenda. And I will ask if the Department of Justice is here in person or on the call. On the call, and Mr. Taki, who from the Department of Justice is on the call.
Madam Chair, you have Mel Rogers from the Department of Justice on the call.
All right, welcome, Mr. Rogers. And do we have Miss Janine Jones here? Is Miss Janine Jones on the call?
Yes, I am. Hello.
All right, welcome, Ms. Jones. Uh, using our Controller McCabe, we have Miss Kristen One Hall here on behalf of the Office of Legislative Council. As soon as you guys see Miss Elvis Tom here, we have the Office of Management of Budget. And Mr. Taki is here on behalf of the Office of Legislative Services. Welcome. Well, the ones who recognizing guests and visiting officials. And you see, it's your Justice Office team here, the office of the President and Vice President. Um, we have from the Legislative Office, I saw Mr. Ricardo Ramirez in the back. All right, welcome, Mr. Ramirez. And also, the Judicial Branch, we have. Mr. Francisco, Miss Damon, and Miss Dullai, and who else? Naira. Uh, what's your help? Naira. What's your help, Miss Yasi? Miss Yasi, um, the Judicial Branch. Thank you for being here at the Budget Finance Conference. Okay, let's proceed on with the meeting adopting the agenda, Mr. Taki. Make sure that the proposed agenda is to the record.
Budget Chairman of Budget Finance Committee, the proposed agenda reads as follows. Budget Finance Committee, the twenty fifth Nomination Council Special Meeting, April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, one P M. Presiding Honorable Jeanne Parrish Chairperson, Honorable Paul R Slater Vice Chairperson. Location, Budget Finance Conference. Meeting Conference Room. One call meeting to order, Roethlisberger invocation. Two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journal. None. Five, receiving reports, none. Six, old business, none. Seven, new business. A, legislation number zero zero five eight dash two five. An action relating to the Budget Finance Committee approving as recommended by Naval Nation Investment Committee. A new subscription for an interest in special four plus fund three. A non-core real estate fund offered by Naval Nation Investment Manager, Westport Capital Partners. And approving the related agreements between Naval Nation and Westport Capital Partners for the Naval Nation Permanent Fund and the Naval Nation Retirement Plan. Sponsored by Honorable Paul R Slater, Honorable Jeanne Parrish. B, legislation number zero zero five nine dash two five. An action relating to the Budget Finance Committee approving fiscal year twenty twenty six budget instructions, establishing a tiny base amount. Approving the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget instruction manual and other related. Other actions related to the Naval Nations fiscal year twenty twenty six comprehensive budget, sponsored by Honorable Jeanne Parrish. A, the closing meeting announcements and adjournment. Madam Chairman of the Budget Finance Committee, that is a proposed agenda running to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Taki. Members of the committees are motion to adopt today's journal. I mean, agenda, all right. Sherwin, Ember, and Esther Friday, three of seconds.
Second.
Second, by Vice Chair Paul Slater. Members of the committee, are there any amendments to the agenda today? Sherwin, Ember, and Esther Friday.
Oh, yeah, we.
Thank you. So no official amendments, but seeing that, uh. We're having a lot of support staff here with the committee. Just want to see if staff can, um. Make sure that we're monitoring the temperature of the room. And if we could bring in some additional tables for individuals who need to work on their laptops, um. Help support the committee when we ask questions, and I appreciate all of our advisors, um. Being present and here pursuant to, um. Title two. So that's just my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. And your request from the office of the Speaker, that we have some folding cables out, um. I think that some get on up here on the side or in front, just for anyone who needs some access to their computers.
That's been requested, we're super.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Please also look aside if I was shocked. That starts to, and I. I just want to. Um, all right, members of the committee, I do not hear the motion on the floor for any amendment, so we'll go to the main motion to vote. Delegate Norman Emby, any vote?
Three.
Delegate Norman Emby, vote screen. Um, Delegate Cheryl Nausen, any vote?
Three.
Delegate Cheryl Nausen, vote screen. And Sherwin, Ember, and Esther Friday, any vote?
I vote three.
Yeah, Sharon, Sherwin, Ember, and Esther Friday, vote screen. And Delegate Lester Gazi, any vote?
Madam Chair, I vote green.
Delegate Lester Gazi, vote screen. Vice Chairman Carl, say your head, vote.
Three.
Vice Chairman Carl, say your vote, screen. We have five members voting on the firm, and zero votes myself not voting, motion carries on the agenda. You'll proceed on to review and adopt journals. We have no journals to adopt today. We're not discussing records. We have no alerts today. We also have no old business, so we'll proceed on to new business, Mr. Taki. Um, was legislation number, you can read, I read the, or electronically? Okay. The, uh, legislation zero zero five eight two five is read into the record electronically. And I can read the title of the record, but I'm glad you're not, I'll say it's a, and it's about democracy, Mr. Jeremy Jimmy and the controller here, so. The title of this legislation is an action relating to the Budget Finance Committee approving as recommended by the Naval Nation Investment Committee. A new subscription for an interest in a small four plus fund three, a non-core real estate fund offered by the Naval Nation Investment Committee, Westport Capital Partners. And approving the related agreements between the Naval Nation and Westport Capital Partners, for the Naval Nation Permanent Fund. And the Naval Nation Retirement Plan. So welcome to the presenters people, Vice Chairman Carl Sanders. And I do believe that there are members of the committee that have questions. Members of the committee, do you desire a presentation of the legislation today? I think that, and it's not, so turn the floor over to Vice Chairman Mr. Taylor.
Okay, very.
Your question.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Budget Finance Committee. Uh, my name is Jeremy Jimmy, for the record, and last time manager for the Naval Nation, I'll take the controller. Uh, my experience, my job, and most of my daily catching is a paper, unless you know. Um. Do you want me to go back into the position of this? I'm starting. Thank you, colleagues. Good afternoon. This legislation will. Support a forty million dollar investment into this new fund from Westport Capital Partners. They're an existing manager of the nation. In which we invested in. Uh, several years ago. And we invested about fifty million dollars at that point. We've been very satisfied with the investment that. We've made with them and the management, the money, the returns that we've had. It's a part of our real estate portfolio. And the permanent fund. And the retirement fund. Thirty million dollars of this investment will come from the permanent fund, and ten million will come from the retirement plan. And that represents about one percent and point nine percent of total assets respectively. So it is less than the prior, uh, subscription or commitment that we made. But it is in line with the advice given by our investment consultants and our investment manager. We go to the exhibits and look at page one hundred and five of them. It's not very far back. It's only a few pages into attachment two. I'll just read this. R B K, who's our investment consultant, recommends Westport Capital Partners Special Core Plus Fund Three to manage a portion of the non-core real estate allocation. So non-core describes the type of real estate that would be invested in. R B K completed its investment due diligence process on the strategy in April and arrived at a positive opinion of the firm. And the newest version of its diversified core plus real estate strategy. A full diligence report is included in the meeting materials in support of this recommendation for committee members review, so. This is a part of a packet that went to the Naval Nation Investment Committee. The investment committee supported unanimously. And as a part of our total portfolio. The Naval Nation currently has non-core real estate at a five percent target for both the permanent fund and the retirement plan. So that's where these, um, allocation amounts come from. And, uh, we need to, uh, pass this if we're going to participate in this fund by the end of this month, and that's why this legislation is being brought to you today. Um. There hasn't been any rush in any diligence or anything on that matter. Um, it's just taking time to complete all those things, and this is the timeframe in which we have. Completed them under the investment section, so. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Jimmy for getting everything. Completed with our investment consultants, R B K, and then all the staff at the investment. Section who support all of this and make this work happen. There is a good, I'd say, um. Uh, slide deck for you to review. The kind of top line information and the descriptions of the fund, where it falls with some of the other real estate. Um, investments that the nation was made. Uh, and you'll see that from like one eighty-five to page one ninety. And if you want to review that on your own, it's a good place to start if you have any questions about. Where this all comes from. So with that said, I want to hand over to Jeremy to provide a little more explanation. And then, well, if you happen to answer any questions that you all have.
Uh, thank you. And also just to mention that you also have the investment consultant R B K online, too, as well, to handle any. Other technical questions as well. Um, again, this is W C P Fund, or Westport Capital, that we. First, I'll come out and enter into Fund C with them. Uh, which is not a non-core, and it's kind of handy coming to date, there is going to be fully matured. And so Fund Three that we're proposing now, are just. Uh, a new fund, uh, that started up, it's closing on Monday, twenty eighth. And this is just a continuation of that strategy, even for a new fund. Um. Like, uh, right there, so you're saying this is the thirty million coming from the market trust, ten million coming from the retirement fund. Uh, this is a non-core real estate. It describes the strategy. This is going to be more, uh, less risk, but, um, income driven. Uh, when we say risk, when I phrase it, we're talking about the. The condition of which these guys purchase, like, this is in their strategy. So non-core, what does it mean that these properties are ready to go, more for rent and income driven? Rather than, uh, looking for. The kind of, um, the description. Convention of it. Um. We did, uh, meet back in twenty-three, the investment committee did make. Uh, recommendations to go forward at that time. Uh, since then, we've been working diligently on this, and now. Uh, we met last week on Friday, with the investment committee. Uh, and they recommended, uh, to the Budget Finance at that time through a resolution for approval. Uh, participation, switching into, uh, Westport Capital. Um, I believe that's everything I have. I've been answering questions that the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That concludes our presentation.
Okay, Vice Chairman Carl Slater and Mr. Jimmy for your presentation on the legislation fifty-eight twenty-five. Members of the committee, uh, is there a motion to consider the legislation? Motion by Delegate Norman Emby, who was. Second, by Delegate Lester Gazi. Um, I don't know if there's going to be, Delegate Cheryl Nausen for her questions.
Um, thank you, everybody. We're pretty safe out there. Thanks for coming. Our, um, special budget meetings, um. If you have some questions on the legislation.
Oh.
Here, and there was a really. Late the, um, registration, and it was. Drop five days ago, and I think, sorry, really hard to read the whole thing, and, um. It just felt like it was very technical for me. I just came onto the committee in January, and. So my questions would be. So you had mentioned that the investment committee and R B K recommended to the Budget and Finance Committee. Did they do that before I came on the committee in January? And if so, I'm putting a copy of that with me, or that recommendation. The other thing that you mentioned, um, is that this was unanimously voted on, but there's only three members that voted on this, um. Investment committee, um, resolution. Um. Who was the other person that voted? Uh, we see two names here, and then how many, um, committee members do we have on the investment committee? Um, the other question I have is, I know it has. Um, the other question I have is, I know it has to do with housing. What would the markets look like in this year, twenty twenty-five, only because with all of the um, with the Trump administration? I'm trying to get, understand how that impacts all of the country, or anything moving forward. That includes all of our ERPA, including this, um, and anything else moving forward. But the other question I have is, um, this is money, my understanding would be for the permanent trust fund and the retirement plan. Were you able to take this to the people? Because that would be relating to the people's money. Do they have a understanding of what they're trying to do with this? And so that, I should provide public comments, have recommendations for you. Um, those are my questions to the man. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Shirley Yasi. Uh, Delegate Shirley Yasi, you're to the budget and finance committee, instead of Delegate Shirley Yasi. The investment committee is uh, a quasi-subcommittee of the budget and finance committee. So, what that means is that. Delegate Yasi.
Yeah.
So, Vice, Vice Chair Carl Slater and myself, um, in the plan of operation for the investment committee. We both serve on the investment committee. Uh, Vice Chair Carl Slater, and I also serve on the retirement plan administration committee. On the investment committee, and uh, we can ask Mr. Chauki. Did you hold the plans of operation for the investment committee and our pack committee and send it over to Delegate Shirley Yasi? Um, so you can better see the outline, because um, those appointments were not nominations by the committees. They're just set in the plan of operation on who can serve on that committee. And the investment committee is comprised of six members and is chaired by uh, the Controller. So, Controller Sean McCain is the, the chairman of the committee, and uh, he works directly with uh, Mr. Jeremy Jimmy. Mr. Jimmy is the staff, the office controller that coordinates and administers the investment committee meetings. So, your question about um, when the investment committee was held, you were actually invited on Zoom to attend. And I made this point that in the investment committee and also in the Art Pack Committee, that members of the budget and finance committee are invited to be a part of these discussions, so this um, this um, this resolution of the Act of two thousand twenty-three is when we first came on as members of the budget and finance committee. So, this was before you became a member of the budget. So, I take that now, that I said that we're invited to this investment committee, members of the budget and finance committee invited to the investment committee. With that said, the rest of your questions regarding the legislation on the Act of the sponsor, can I push your questions?
I thank you very much, Delegate Yasi, for the questions. Um, so, it's kind of different levels to the diligence process and to start that process, there was the two thousand twenty-three resolution, if you see here, that NNIC J Y zero seven twenty-three, so that's from July of two thousand twenty-three. And um, I don't see who else would order this side from uh, Chair and myself. I just want to say, I think Chair, on the Art Pack side, it is that the Vice Chair serves on Art Pack with the Chair. On this one, I saw it to be on the investment committee, because it's an open-ended, you know, any member of the budget and finance can serve on it. Through, you know, a nomination from, from the, from the committee. So, that was the first stage of the diligence, going to do it and authorizing it, you know, authorizing investment section to do it, operating the consultant to do it. You know, those things cost money, um, and time and resources, and we don't just start diligence for any random thing that comes before the committees. But then the next phase was, after that's been completed, and there is an affirmative recommendation from investment section and, you know, our consultant, that that comes to the investment committee. The investment committee reviews that information and then makes that recommendation to BFC, because it's an advisory committee to BFC. And so, the membership of the investment committees, the attorney general, the auditor general, the president, two members of budget and finance, and then the controller. The controller chairs it, the controller generally is not voting on matters before the committee. So, the three, I can't remember July twenty twenty-three at the time I had, but um, last Friday, it was Chair, Parish, myself, and then Chris Beecher acting as the um, the designated, the proxy for the president, which is authorized. Um, he, you know, when I say unanimous, those were the voting members that were participating in the meeting at that point and voted in the affirmative. Later on, the appointed auditor general or acting auditor general at that point, Janine Jones, she got on, um, but she didn't, she was not on the meeting at this, during this time, and um, consequently did not vote for it, so that gives an idea that we had the DOJ advisor, but we didn't have the voting member from the Department of Justice. And then we didn't have a voting member from the auditor general's office that was participating, um. So, you could, you see, we had four of the six, we'll try and there. So, that's Exhibit A. We get two, two questions then about like, where does this fit in, or maybe thinking about like the current market situation and say our portfolio overall, is that kind of generally, okay, so. And I would say as a matter of principle, and I'll let Jeremy RBK handle, you know, all the other things. You know, we have a strategy that is set up to handle good times, bad times, and let things level out, so that we have growth and mitigate risk in that process. And so, we have a master investment policy, and then we have sub-policies for different types of investments, and then sub-policies for different funds themselves, too. Then that speaks to what the asset allocation mix would be between, say, real estate or um, you know, large-cap securities. Oh, you weren't correct. Okay, uh, I'll try to speak loudly. So, just yelling over here. So, that speaks to, okay, here are the types of things that we authorize the nation to invest in. Do we want to invest in cryptocurrencies? You know, maybe Delegate Bigay is just itching for us to get into that, but we, as a nation, our investment consultant, I'm joking, don't you? And for those on the line, he has not done that. Okay, I don't think that's what it's so. You know, those are speculative investments, and the nation doesn't engage in those super speculative investments. And investments that might have higher risk, but also a higher reward, we balance those out with um, the, the mix, right? So, okay, maybe in a, in a balanced portfolio, in a modern portfolio theory, you include some of that, so that there's potential for growth. But you don't want all our eggs in one basket. You don't want to over-allocate into that type of asset class, because it just represents a greater risk. And then, what Jeremy's job is, is to work with RBK to identify, what are the goals for each of the funds, right? We want to have a cash return annually to support either cash assistance to tribal members to um, support, like for, say elders, okay, we need cash to purchase glasses, we need cash to purchase hearing aids. That helps then inform what that mix is. So, I'm just going to zoom out a little bit, so you get a little bit since, you know, I, I know you're, you're newer, and I think that's kind of what you're getting at. And then, do we want to have appreciation of that focus, of that, of that fund overall? And would you want it to grow? Do you want it focused on um, assets that have the potential to grow? That maybe we could liquidate in the future to support some income or rejigger into more cash-flowing um, asset classes or securities? So, I think maybe that's a little bit of background, and then um, I do want to mention one thing before I go back over to Jeremy and RBK, and that is about taking it to the people. So, we have the budget and finance committee, which has this advisory committee chaired by the controller, and that's the investment committee. And the idea is that we bring in the expertise from the Department of Justice, auditor general, controller's office, investment, investment sections under that, and then work with all these principals, including, you know, members of the budget and finance committee to make these decisions on behalf of our people, so that there doesn't have to be, you know, some sort of referendum, maybe if that's what you're talking about, about how to extend these funds and things of that nature. So, with the permanent fund, right? We had uh, was it twelve percent of all revenues ended up getting deposited into the permanent trust fund annually? Um, unless there's some other thing where it doesn't go into that, but generally, that's what happens, and that's been going on since nineteen ninety, I think, was the first year we started doing it. After the initial, you know, investment from the Karen McGee settlement. And then, there was a twenty-year lockup of that fund. But when it was created, it said you could create five-year expenditure. I think expenditure plans are no longer than five years in nature for extending fund income. And so, um, it's fund income minus the reinvestment that is also in there, and I can't remember what the reinvest, is it five percent? Yeah, so five percent has to be reinvested, but ninety-five percent can become available under an expenditure plan. So, that's the way things were set up on Navo Nation law. And it doesn't mean that you have to have an expenditure plan to spend all that money. It just says that it's available at that point. That's where that forty million dollars plus the PTF excess income comes from. And these are investments that support that. So, then, if we were going to go back to the people, there is something built in in the PTF legislation, the permanent trust fund legislation, that says if you're going to expend fund principal, then you have to get a two-thirds affirmative vote. Uh, I think it's all registered voters. It's one of those ones where it's like everyone is registered. It's not like you voted in the last election, two-thirds of the people voting in the election. It's a very high standard, and one that failed, you know, in like twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, somewhere around there. There were some RDC and BFC members who were interested in uh, extending that money on a roads investment plan, so. You know, there are avenues for popular participation in making that decision, I would say. It comes to people or constituencies working with their delegates, who are coming to the committee to submit plans and how to extend that funding. And the way that we have done that is through our budgetary process, as budget and finance made recommendations to the council on how to move forward. But in terms of the specific asset mix and allocation, you know, I think that's something where I personally believe it's important to have expert advice, so that we don't end up investing in business booby-dobbles or, you know, what have you. But if the people, you know, want to see a different way of extending the money, then, you know, this is just where it's invested over here. The way it gets spent is up to the council and the people. And, you know, that's the prerogative, any delegate to submit ideas, how to do that, and any individual constituent who wants to submit those to us, so. In terms of taking it to the people, you know, um, I think that's, that's all of our responsibilities. Like, if, if we have an idea of what popular involvement should be involved in improving investment committee decisions, then we should be introducing that to the committee or introducing that in this process, um, when it comes to that, that we require changing those different levels that I just explained. And I hope Jeremy, okay, before we go to Jeremy, we'll go to uh, Controller, and then Jeremy and RBK can kind of hone in on the market, and I think the soundness of this in this particular environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Delegate Yasi. I want to make a statement as the chair of the investment committee as well, that something that Vice Chair Slater alluded to is, all of the money that we have in our entire portfolio is governed by subpolicies. So, there's one master trust policy, and then there's, I think, what is it, Jeremy, forty-nine subpolicies? All of those subpolicies govern how decisions are made for the investments themselves, so. I think it's important to note for the committee members and everyone on the line that the investment committee doesn't make arbitrary investment decisions. Those subpolicies are actually approved by the budget and finance committee. So, we are following what prior budget and finance committees passed as far as a sub-policy on how to invest this money. So, what you have before you today, actually, and I'll let Jeremy explain it a little bit better, but this money is actually going to be invested exactly how it was before. It's just a new fund. So, the investment mix really doesn't change. It's just, I don't know, Jeremy, you probably explained very well, but the last fund expired, I think it was, and then we had to just put it into the new fund that they created for the same investment. So, it's not even really a change in what we're doing. It's just, they came to us and said, this faith, I can't remember the, the number two fund or something, three, and we just moved it into the new one. So, it's not, we're not even really changing the investment mix. We're just putting it into a, basically a new name, right, for a different fund. So, just to give you some background, like I said, we don't um, and the, and the, as the Controller and the, and then Chair of the Investment Committee, you know, I don't vote, I just kind of oversee it. And I can assure the committee and the public that the investment decisions made by our managers are um, are ones that are actually earning us a pretty good return on investment. I've reported before that we had some downturns during COVID, but I think we've come back. Certainly, your concerns about what's happening in the current administration affects other markets. We spoke about that in the investment committee as well. Um, but we continue to monitor it, and again, just, just so that everyone's aware that the uh, all the money in our investment portfolio is governed by subpolicies, so we're not, uh, there is a policy we're following it. We're not just making arbitrary decisions on how this moves, that I just kind of floating out of that investment pool, so. And I'll turn it over. I just wanted to make sure, uh, make that statement as the chair, and thank you.
Okay, um, actually, why don't we go to RBK? Did I know there's a, they had a hard sell back too, Bob? Okay, just so we can get their comments on the record and then back in the tree. Bo, are you on the line?
Hi, hi, yes, I'm on the line. Could, could you, I couldn't hear everything. What, what was the specific, there was this question about the, the market or just condition of markets?
Delegate Yasi was asking about, I think, the relationship between the investment in this fund, current market conditions, and do you, do you want to elaborate on that? So, just, she's going to speak in a second, please.
Thank you, and then Delegate Yasi, Bo is the um, he's, he's the main advisor for the uh, portfolios of the nation, um, along with Mr. Jeremy Jimmy, so Mr. Jimmy, he's the investment manager, I oversee, but he works directly with Bo on it, so ask him anything, Delegate Yasi. Thank you. Um, so my question then would be kind of what um, Controller McCain had, is talking about, and my, can you hear me, Mr. Bo?
Uh, yes, I can.
So, what I'm hearing is that this would be the same type of investment that was previously done before. And, but the difference that I'm asking, or what I'm seeing, the variable that's different is the housing market now. When everything that's going on with the Trump administration and everything that's going um, up and down, how would this impact? Because how I'm seeing this in my head is, is this a long-term, is it eight years, ten years? What is it we're looking at? Or is it just a year or two years? And that's kind of where I'm coming from. How much? And the other question would be, if this is the same from last time, and again, I'm seeing the different variables, the housing market, what was made from the last investment? I don't, I don't recall seeing those numbers in this legislation, that was, maybe it was in the presentation, but like I said, I haven't been able to read everything and, and because it's a really large document. So, I hope that helps you understand the question a little more. Thank you.
Yep, um, yeah, I'll, I'll take the, the latter part of your question. It was about the, the duration of the investment itself. Um, it's a lo, it's a longer-term investment, so typically it'll be, it's going to run about eight to ten years. So, you make an investment today, the manager takes the money that all the investors like yourselves and other uh, state pension plans may make. Uh, they'll make those investments over the next, uh, let's say, year or two. Those investments will make some improvements to those properties, um, with the intention of selling those probably, you know, six to seven years from now, um, at, at a, at a, a higher level than what they bought in, at them at, so. Uh, that's typically the approach with real estate. It's not something where you can invest in for one year and try to time the market. It, it's uh, you know, again, as, as um, others have alluded to, there's a policy and a strategy in place that's long-term, that's an intentional, intentional to try to, to generate stable returns and stable income for the various investment pools that the Navo Nation has under its control today. In terms of the, the market, and I think the comment about housing, uh, that, that's a fair question. Um, I, I would point to one thing first, which is that we had a, a recession or pullback in real estate markets in two thousand twenty-three that was pretty significant. We saw most real estate markets, so office, multifamily or apartments, um, industrial, uh, pullback in, in, in aggregate by about, you know, fifteen to twenty percent. So, the valuation of the properties came down by about that a month, by that amount or percentage in, in two thousand twenty-three. So, from a, a starting point, it's actually a, a fairly attractive entry point. You don't get these very often. Um, particularly like right after a recession in, in real estate. We had, the last, the, the last one that we had was um, right after the great financial crisis in, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine was a really bad year for real. um, right after the great financial crisis in, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine was a really bad year for real estate as well. I think markets and the real estate markets were down twenty-plus percent in, in that calendar year. So similar situation, um, where the entry point is favorable, uh, that's one thing that's going for this strategy today. Um, so they're going to be buying properties that are at a lower value. Notably, there are some challenges with the current, um, policy announcements that are going on around with tariffs, um, as, as well as immigration. But, um, some of those things are actually favorable, particularly for real estate and inflation sensitive assets, like what real estate is. Um, in particular, because of the immigration policy, you have fewer workers in the construction space today, um, than you may have had a year or eighteen months ago. So that puts pressure on pricing. It makes real estate more expensive, uh, makes it appreciate in value. Um, the other thing that's going on too, if, if, if these tariffs that are being announced and policies put into place for certain, I think we're in a, and we're in a, we're in a pause right now, I believe, uh, for the next ninety days, but that could change. Um, that puts pressure on the, the, the materials, the pricing of the materials that go into constructing buildings. Um, and so those factors actually push the price of real estate up. And the other thing, and more specific to the housing comment, um, there's a housing shortage across the US. Um, and it's mostly because of the affordability of owning a home. And so what happens is a lot of folks look for rental properties to, to buy, to, to, to live and, and, and choose to, uh, um, for, uh, purposes of just having a riff over their heads. So this particular fund is going to invest in multifamily or apartments uh, as well as industrial properties. I'll get to industrial properties here in a second. But, um, those apartments, those need to be, there's a shortage of apartments too, as well as just general housing for people. Um, but this strategy will look to, um, buy, um, properties that are already in place, make some improvements to them, and then try to improve the rent, the rental, uh, population within those properties. That will be helpful. That's one of the core strategies of this, uh, or core approaches of the strategy is to try to, to get, uh, a significant amount of rental properties, apartment type properties in, in the fund to generate income. But as to well, like I said before, is to sell these properties, you know, six or seven years down the road to another investor who wants, wants to, um, uh, take on that, take on the, the responsibility for the ownership of them. On the industrial property side, uh, as you know, things get shipped to our doorstep today by Amazon and other companies. There needs to be warehouses, um, industrial logistics, uh, 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 buildings that coordinate the shipment of goods, uh, via, um, UPS trucks, et cetera. That's also another significant part of this strategy is looking at, um, properties in key growing cities. Uh, let's say Charlotte, North Carolina, which is a very growing area, uh, Phoenix, Arizona, as well as, so a lot of of what you would describe as Sunbelt, uh, cities that are growing at a, a greater clip than you might find in somewhere like in the northeast of the United States. So a lot of shipping into industrial logistics, um, properties like that are another focus of this, um, strategy. And that's what they did in the second, uh, the, the, the prior fund that the nation was invested. And there was many investments along those lines, apartments and industrial type buildings. That will be the focus for this as well. Um, and so I think again, uh, the entry point is, is a, a, at a good point. Uh, the manager did do a good job in the last fund. Um, I can probably in a few minutes, again, go to the, um, one of the reports and pull up the, the performance uh, if Jeremy's not already doing that. Um, but a, again, hopefully that answers the question about, um, maybe there's some concern about investing in this, just given that things are a little bit, uh, uh, unstable in markets. But that's going to happen and instability is going to be an issue in markets every several years. We, we come across this and, you know, again, having a long-term strategy and sticking to it is, is a tried and true approach to, to having a successful investment program like the nation does today and will in the future. So hopefully that answers your question, but if you have any follow-up questions, I'm happy to answer, answer those.
Thank you, RBK, for responding to the questions posed by the budget and finance committee. Um, Delegate Shannon Yazi, do you have any follow-up questions?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Bo. Um, I wanted to ask about, you have brought up that we here have industrial properties and apartments. Where are these located? Because it doesn't sound like it would be on the Navajo Nation. And then you brought up Sunbelt areas, um, that would be my question. Thank you.
Yes, uh, they, they wouldn't necessarily be located on, on, on the Navajo Nation. That's correct. Uh, the fund is geographically diversified across other, um, major cities across the United, the United States.
Oh, I think we have a report from Ox, the controller regarding those, uh, investments. There was a map that was presented to the committee last year during our budget and finance committee. We were considering the audit. Um, and that's correlated. We can ask, uh, Sean just stepped out, but I'll give it to back order to, uh, Vice Chair Crosshair and Jeremy, Jeremy, we have response to that question. Thank you.
So I mean, thi, this is a partnership. So the general partner is the investment manager. And that is Westport, Westport Capital Partners. And so they make the investment decisions and the nation sits as a limited partner with other investors. And we essentially provide the funding and then have expectation of a return. But we're not in the day-to-day management membership of the assets that, that entity holds. So they go in and, you know, maybe they get a loan to purchase it and then also make the improvements. So they have, I think it was, yeah, here fifty to, yeah, they want to use a hundred to fifty, sixty-five percent. Um, so it's not the nation individually owns any of these assets. It's that this investment vehicle, this partnership ends up owning the, you know, industrial logistics part, the life sciences facility, the garden terrace apartments, those things. And then we essentially have an ownership stake in the, the profit, revenue or whatever that comes from that. Um, does that answer your question, Donny Yazi?
All right, Delegate Yazi, questions?
Uh, thank you for that. So since this is an eight to ten-year project or an investment, um, how will the performance reports be provided to budget and finance committee and the council? And also the people, because again, we would be using their funds. Um, my next question would be in the eight to ten years, will this investment create jobs, internships or training opportunities for Navajo people? What would that look like? Um, the other one is, um, I, and I haven't received any plan of operation. So I don't know in that kind of operation, it's going to include criteria for monitoring this fund over time and what does that look like? Because again, I still would like to see, um, since there have been, it sounds like two other investments. And I'm sure those were, I think that's just me, I, and maybe you guys have already looked at it on your investment committee. I'm, I'm not really gone to any of those, but what, what was made from the last time? Because if we're just going to do another stamp on this one, how we move forward, I'd like to kind of see what it would look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Shannon Yazi. Those are great questions. Um, and what the controller has going forward with the investment committee is now sending any of our managers or partners to the investment committee on a quarterly basis. So again, um, if you'd like to attend those meetings, we can ask the, the managers directly, um, your questions. Otherwise, uh, I know the controller shares, um, the performances, um, on a quarterly basis. And, uh, we could send over that latest report from Ox, the controller. Mister, I think, uh, do we have a RBK report here today? All right, Mr. Bo, could you send that over to Rodney Taki and then we can distribute that out to the committee? But, uh, where's Vice Chair Crosshair?
Uh, thank you very much, Donny Yazi. So, um, you're asking about jobs, investment, like positive returns, maybe outside the financial return to the nation. And that's something that the committee, I think, has wrestled with for, for a good chunk of time. I mean, I've only been on at this turn, I know, I'm speaker, probably, but she brought it up in the last budget and finance. Um, and it was one of, I'd say, our charges when we got onto the investment committee, uh, Chair Parrish and I. And it's something where we have to balance, um, mitigating risk of loss of money and loss of return with those other positive economic benefits. And so in the investment policy, there's, uh, permission for direct investments and accretive investments. And those are separate from this asset class, you know, the non-quarter real estate. Those are the types of investments where you can consider what the um, positive economic employment impacts, like other ancillary benefits might be to the Navajo Nation, the Navajo people, um, the government, et cetera. And it's not necessarily tied just back to what the master trust five and ten-year return is um, for, you know, the direct and, and those investments. If we want to make things that are more tailored to that, then that's, that's on us and we have to create those. And so the investment committee charged Jeremy with working with sovereign financial, with finance. Then there another investment consultant that helped us with reviewing the terms and the renegotiation of the gain loan. And they helped us in a few other diligence. And they provided some recommendations to us, like, okay, if the nation were going to stand up for its own venture capital or private equity, you know, like whatever style of investment we want to do to seek those sorts of investments. And I'll just tell you, I don't want to get sidetracked into that right now because that's not the point of this legislation. But I understand the point of why you're bringing it up because it, it is a discussion that I am sure, you know, Jeremy would love to talk and give some direction from leadership. It's, it's very difficult to figure those things out because it's almost like by definition, any investment that's going to take place on a Navajo Nation is super speculative. I mean, it's just not, it's not a growing market. It's not high income. You know, there's all these barriers, the things where the reason these guys are investing in the Sunbelt is people are moving to the Sunbelt, businesses are relocating to the Sunbelt. It's growing and real estate, you want to go to where the growth is. So you're guaranteed that people are going to pay your leases and your rents and you can raise them and increase them. And when you slap on the new paint and put a new fridge in there, people are going to jump in there, you know? Um, so, you know, they're kind of big structural things, but like, I think there are a lot of people who are trying to figure out how to do, i- if I'm trying to, when you're talking about, how to make those things. But to compel entities that have fiduciary responsibility to the limited partners, other people, to make investment decisions that wouldn't provide that, the best rate of return. You know, you, you probably get them some securities laws and other stuff, questions. So us trying to figure out what portion of our portfolio could we put to that? What metrics should we use? What entities should we stand up? Like those are the leadership decisions that we need to make. And it, it takes time trying to balance out, getting just simple, you know, stuff like this out with the big picture questions. In terms of the reporting, I know that RBK does, I believe, send out the flash reports to every member of the budget and finance committee in addition. So that's a monthly report. And then sometimes they do a market update thing if things get crazy, you know, like there's a huge dip for, I don't know what, you know, they send things out to their clients. And that's generally the same distribution. So you should see something from RBK that comes in. It goes, you know, I, I see the committee members CC on it. So I know they're going out. But then there's a quarterly update that we get and that also is provided to investment committee members and to the budget and finance committee. And so if you're going to review those, you'd look at this manager. So you'd either see his WCP or Westport Capital Partners. And then you'd see SC, like special core one, two, or SCP, a special core plus, right? So focusing on some core real estate, but then these value adds that are outside of like what that traditionally means and what that definition is. Um, so that's, that's how it's monitored then on like a quarterly basis and a monthly basis. On a quarterly basis, that's where you provide a full report with like the investment manager's stamp. And they, you know, compare the nickels and dimes between what comes in from a funds to the consultants, to what's internally reported with the nation. Um, and then that's provided to us. And that is generally, like, that's a part of the controller's report. Um, and it's also a separate report to, to the council. And then for the plan of operation, there's a plan of operation for the investment section, right? Okay, no, just kidding. So the plan of operation for the investment section. And that, I guess, is what governs that. If you're looking for a plan of operations for the fund, the plan of operations for our relationship with them is this contract. Um, and then the investment strategy and all those materials, and some of that sort of stuff is included in here. But in a more digestible way, even though it's not directly from them, this is coming and sifted through the investment consultants. Um, RBK, that's what this stuff is on one eighty-seven, one eighty-eight. It's explaining that. And I think if you want to set up a time like half an hour or something like that to talk with RBK next week, or I can't fit them tomorrow, but I'm sure they can find a half an hour next week to talk to any other committee members. Then you could explain like, or maybe just Jeremy, Jeremy can take an hour and talk to us about different types of real estate investments. Because there are different strategies and, and, and words that are, in nomenclature that are used in here that a lot of people just don't know. And so I think we all need to be educated on those things. I think I hope that answers Donny Yazi's questions. And if you want to get from these guys and have me shut up on how this goes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Crosshair. Delegate Shannon Yazi, have any follow-up questions?
Um, thank you. So you had mentioned, um, thank you for your responses, that the reports will be monthly or yearly and then in the controllers report, where in the controllers report would it be included? Is it like, um, included in a big lump sum? Is it separated out and that? And then, um, do investment committee members or be a budget finance committee members, are they also to invest in this? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Um, no, I mean, for the last one, we no, 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 no one, this is the nation's money. This is not coming with any individual person's money who is a, uh, an elected official, a, an employee of the nation who is, who is co-investing in this in any way. The only way that I could see that happening, which I got, is like if we bought an index and then somehow, you know, each of us owned an index like BlackRock, you know, or SFX or something like that, you know, less than B five, I think.
But the nation could offer it as a benefit plan to its employees.
Well, it essentially is a part of the benefit plan because it's part of the defined benefit plan. We could create more investment be, or sorry, we could create different types of investment opportunities for people through their 401K. Um, but you know, there's certain things that kind of you can invest in with that. Um, I think it's going to add, it adds a lot of complexity to management and probably fees to figuring those things out. And honestly, like in the grand scheme of things, you know, if you're more at retirement age, you're looking at fixed income, right, to pay regularly amounts back to you. And this is not quite in that ballpark. Um, I don't know. That's interesting. I mean, I, I, I don't know if you're positive or negative on that aspect of people co-investing, but I, I don't want to get into that situation because then how do all the incentives align between the different actors and people getting attached to fund managers and things like that, I, I personally don't. For the reporting, Controller gives us that, I would say, the slimmer one that we got on our desk on Monday. And then baked into it, it are the details. The details are emailed to us from investment section in RBK. And the next one that comes out, I'll make sure to slide for you. It doesn't, the report doesn't happen on March three, folks, right? That's when the quarter ends. And so they compile it over the next month. And it's usually about a month to get things together, right? So I'll let Jeremy handle that now.
All right, thank you. Yeah, uh, when it comes to the controls report, it's at the near, at the very back end. And also in the H, but it just shows the different sub-trusts within the master trust, uh, performances. The granular detail that is in the investment consultant's quarterly report. That breaks it down by the sub-trust, by the managers, how they're performing. When it comes to performances, we benchmark all the managers against adventure. So in this case, it would be what the real estate uses, obviously, how do they? So in this case, it would be what the real estate uses, obviously, how do they perform against it? If they are underperforming, that is something that this is, yeah, so it's the real estate index, so it's the real estate version of the S and P. And so when it comes to active managers, you want to have the manager that are performing today. So when it comes to monitoring, that's what we do on a quarterly basis, we run through the investment committee. We look at performances, we look at how the managers come in. And we put them on watches if they underperform. We have meetings with them if they're underperforming. We have mechanisms in place in order to get these managers back on track with the not performing, and then we can also terminate them, make that recommendation to the budget finance committee. If they are not performing over a long period of time, but there are steps to it. And then the same thing, this wasn't taken lightly, this was done through a manager search, this was vetted. These were done with interviews with the investment committee. And investment committee chose out of those collections with managers. And so that's kind of where, as far as individual investments, your second question, that there's different what would you call it, mentalities when it comes to investing. An institutional investor, you wouldn't want diversification, and you're there for the long term. Individual investors, they tend to be volatile in their actions when it comes to immediate noise. So if something happens, everybody wants to withdraw that money. Managers, when we work with institutional managers, they like to keep a stable way. We know that we're diversified, we're going to be there for the long haul, just like this funded for an eight to ten year. But if you had an individual investor, if they hear something happens in the market, then they want to withdraw that money, and then that creates a risk on the manager side that they're not able to invest the way they should be. And it's puts a risk on the other investors that are pooling their monies together for that investment. So there's different approaches, but there is, your 401k, that's self-directed for the novel employees. And there's funds that are within those selection guards, again, reviewed by the investment committee. The investment committee can move funds out of that selection, they can put new funds in there. After purview, and that's also another review that they go through as well with along with our pack, maybe you just have the annual art that maybe you'll run through the 401k offering and see if those managers still wanted.
Let me say one thing, yeah, I, in the one that Chair Parrish just sent out the last quarter, it looks like you were CC'd on it. So I just emailed and CC'd you and asking that the RBK individual work with Ryan to make sure the BFC members are up to date. But that, then you would scroll down about PDF and you'd see Westport as one of the managers, and you'd see what the performance has been up until now. Sure.
You guys share problems later, and I was corrected earlier that investment committees, such as the second number budget finance is an elected position, so thank you for perky, and then also I think Chair Amber Krasner, I also asked for those updates too. So if you take a look at the PDF file, that was emails, doing thousands of texts, and then, and then it's a lot of information line by line. Take a look at that, but that before it comes out. So, yeah, I was gonna give more questions.
Hi, yeah, just one more.
Thank you, I think they'd still like to review the plan of operations, so for now they can only be able to support this legislation for this time.
Not for his office?
No, for having, for your investment committee, right? That's what was brought up.
Okay, so I think Delegate Shelly Gazi are asking for the master investment policies. Are you asking for the master investment policy or the plan of operation? Because I did mention the plan of operations, but I did, that goes back to the code. And how the budget finance committee set up, and our advisors advise, so that could be entitled to. So Office of Legislative Services can take a look at that, send over the information. Delegate Shelly Gazi, that's what I refer to, the cycle policy, and I'll certainly work on that. I thought it would be great to be able to request that ahead of time, and then we could have worked that out. But Delegate Gazi, do you have more questions?
Well, I want to comment, I noticed this was dropped last week, and we had five days to review this document. And it's, it's taking me some time to review all of this, and there seems like there's additional information on your plan of operation, this other document that there's that you also review quarterly, and so I just feel like for me, it's a lot of technical information, I was telling you for time to review this. That's just my comment, no other questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Shelly Gazi, we'll have Mr. Chong. To you, other information, I'll say.
Thank you. Just to make sure that we do get you the information, irrespective of how you go today, that's, I understand that. But Delegate, are you asking for like the fund prospectus or like a description of what the strategy is? Sorry, I said irrespective of how you go today, so I'm making sure you get the information you want, so are you talking like the fund like prospectus or like describing like what the investment strategy is? Or what do you mean by plan of operation? That's, that's just what I'm trying to figure out. Or are you talking about like the internal Navo Nation documents that govern like the master investment policy, the permanent trust fund policy, the real estate investment policy, it's like just, I just want to know which things I need to get to you to make sure that you get what you want.
Go back to, thank you, Mr. Sharon Crossley, go back to Delegate Shelly Gazi.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon, I would appreciate if I could get all of that information, like you said, the more I know, the more I'm going to be informed about, you know, how your, the investment committee is utilizing the permanent trust funds and then retirement items, it just helps me understand how if these kind of questions come up. And I know some individuals do ask, you know, how we're using these different to help some money, because I know a lot of people, when they talk about at chapter meetings, roads, roads, roads. And they also ask, how do we use the permanent trust fund for roads, or we want to use it for this? And so having some of this information, and I know also just on social media, you know, a lot of this will end up coming out that we're putting money aside for our own benefit, and so it helps me to be informed, so I'm giving them as much information, the correct information, so whatever you have that you think would help me understand this better, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Shelly Gazi, we'll go to Shelly Amber Krasner, right?
Oh, yeah, thank you. So I just want to state for the record, I did send out an email on April eleventh, I mean, been on there at least, to RBK to add Leslie Yalzi and Shelly Yalzi to the, the reports. And so I would assume that the investment committee would make sure collaboration with the budget and finance committee, that all committee members are receiving their work. So that you can see how it's vital in terms of how we understand and synthesize the information. I'm just going to state again for the record, it's always been a challenge to get information from the investment committee. I understand, you know, calendar invites are late. Or, you know, so as a committee member, and when my colleagues, when you asked to be on the committee, I was very clear in terms of transparency. And providing updates to the committees, so if, you know, chair as the investment committee and your staff who provide support, you just really need to increase that collaboration to the committees, that we're all on the same track. We were able to have a discussion on our strategy meeting, but that was very, very high level and very rushed. And so I would say this kind of is important as we look at our committee calendar, on when are we going to have these discussions? And I believe at that meeting, we talked before, I think Vice Chair mentioned that a new approach with investment committee is to meet with managers more like on a quarterly basis, like staggered. And so that could also be something that could help committee members. We have two committee members who do not have this historical context. And you're asking them to vote on an issue that they're not properly prepped. So it's not just the sponsor to provide that information, it's also staff, the subject matter experts who work with the committee. I haven't received any additional information regarding this legislation. And so I just wanted to make that comment, that that request was made, I know we're paying RBK, I'm not sure why this broach did not send that information to my colleagues here. Maybe that would have just provided enough information to feel comfortable about moving forward. I wanted to state that for the record, there's definitely face for improvement when it comes to investment. Those veterans have asked for a comprehensive review. And so we are working with the Office of the Controller to prepare that information. They also want to know how their, you know, funds are being invested, so there has to be more of an effort to put this information into labels so that our, our people know you know, this very vital information regarding moving forward and how we make these decisions, so. I just wanted to make that comment, and I appreciate some other questions, and wanted to just provide some additional context.
Yeah, thank you, Sharon Amber Krasner, how do you? And Vice Chair Crossley, you're closing comments today.
All right, Delegate, I'm I don't know why, well, I guess it seems like nothing has come out between April eleventh and now, but RBK, you're listening online, you should be, you know, be proactive, so, you know, send send the last maybe a couple quarters of reports, or you just think the last quarter's report, back to the committee again. So that Delegate, sorry, Delegate and Delegate can get copies of this. I know that Chair already sent out one copy of that, but any other relevant information you can send out to them. And I did get a response from this Goro, Goro, I don't know, I'm sorry, Alexandra. She said that she'll work with Rodney, so it looks like in terms of the breakdown, I'll say this just as an investment committee member from budget and finance. Previously, this is not, I sent them all out, so Rodney, you're getting all the invites directly from Jeremy or his administrative staff, so make sure then that that's forwarded out to the committee membership. Not, you know, because we're getting those directly, but then we need the next phase. Because we have accountability and direct oversight of you, I mean, of course, your staff, but I see that you're a part of this, just make sure it gets out to the rest of the committee. And then I just talked with Jeremy about getting the RBK, the Navo Nation Investment Section, like he's done a good job of getting a shared file, whatever website set up. So once he gets those up, I'm sure he'll let us know, right? They can review that historical stuff. And then I think we should have a section for the prospectus prospect, whatever, all the prospectuses for the folks that were invested in and get information, and I'll just let you say some closing comments.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, sorry about that. We did do an update, we did have former BFC members on that, you know, blast that RBK does on a monthly basis, and if you guys ever have trouble communicating, you guys can always ask my office, you can always continue forward and push forward with some changes within the year of our consultants or advisors. If I knew the problem, I would, I would jump on it quickly. I will say this, this funding does close on Monday, and if the nation does not partake in it, then this is just an opportunity gone past, and that's okay, that's a, that's Navo Nation's option. But that's just the risk on the other side, so it's not going through today. But there's other options, investments are there that are always partaking as well. I mean, I'm an open book, I have an open door, anybody can always come in and ask. We are working on transparency, we're working to see what our new ERP system is able to survive versus a dashboard. And if they're not able to give us a dashboard, then we're looking to procure a dashboard, so that investment results are going to be posted on our OLC website. And that's something that we're working on, so we're giving it until, I believe, we're going live in October, so we're waiting until October to see what they're able to do for us. If they're not, it's a book for here, and it's another ongoing project of ours to get that open running. As far as the veterans, I've been invited, I have not heard from the committee yet that they want me to put together a comprehensive, but I can now. I can put that together. I did a lot of assets, provide our preliminary results for FY twenty six, for whether are they going to be able to be budgeting. I did send that out, we started finalizing that list, but the preliminary numbers do have it. But yeah, we're always working on the comprehensive list for veterans, we did try to hold a what would you call it, a outreach to veterans, I believe last year RBK came down, we were meeting, and we're ready to put a link to the general about investment, and how those investments work for the veterans as well, so we have done that. And, you know, it's just a matter of asking us, and you can always come back and provide those trainings and education. Thank you.
I, I just bring the book to them, or I print it out, like to my central agency, that is after it comes out, because they'll have the worksheet that shows you how the calculations happen, and then you can just show them the top line sheet. And say, this is what you're invested in, this is the performance. And we start following the markets, be like, oh, this is why I think this happened or not. Just don't give them any investment advice. Thank you, Chair.
Can I add something, Chair? No, forget it.
Have you got it?
No.
The rest of the committee, are there any other questions? Well, hearing no further questions from the committee, other we did not hear any amendments to the legislation, so Mr. Chong, we'll go back to the vote on the main motion, could you do the roll call?
Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, this is Roll Call Vote, legislation number zero zero five eight dash two five, Honorable, number, how do you vote? Honorable Number, vote screen, Honorable, call our speaker, how do you vote?
Please.
Honorable, Carl, our speaker, vote screen, Honorable Amber, how do you vote? Honorable Amber, how do you vote, screen, Honorable Left, how do you vote? Honorable Left, how do you vote, Honorable Shelly Gazi, how do you vote? Honorable Shelly Gazi, that is, foreign favor, one opposed, the manager not voting.
Thank you, Mr. Chong. Members of the committee, we had four members, I mean, there was one that was not voting, which was Carrie. And Delegate Shelly Gazi, look at that information over to you. And thank you, Mr. Jimmy and Mr. McCain for being agents today, and also RBK for being on the line today. And Delegate, or sorry, Mr. Sharon Crossley is.
Yeah, that was very weird. I've never had someone say, look at the camera, make a meeting here. But thank you very much, colleagues, and these are all questions for us to do better.
Right, the chairman of the panel to Vice Chair Crossley at this time.
Revisit my coffee.
In the committee, uh, let's take a five minute recess before we get to the, I got it. In the committee, uh, let's take a five minute recess before we get to the, I got it. Legislation, so let's take a five minute recess, and we'll come back at. Legislation, so let's take a five minute recess, and we'll come back at. Three forty one. Three forty one.
Um.
Six, or sorry, seven B legislation zero zero five nine twenty five. Mr. Poythie, can you please fill the legislation page one to the record? I understand it's legislation itself that could have read.
Vice Chairman Johnson, we have legislation number two five nine dash two five eight April eighteen, two thousand and twenty five thousand resolution. An action related to the budget finance committee approving fiscal year twenty twenty six budget instruction. Establishing the funding base amount for proving the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget instruction manual and other actions related to the Navajo Nation's fiscal year twenty twenty six. This legislature has written its entire normal time. Vice Chairman Johnson.
Damn.
I know.
Colleagues, we have legislation number five nine twenty five in front of us that will establish a basic funding amount of budget instructions. For a budget planning and processing over the next few months. And I would like to say it can't often. I'll hand the floor over to Chair Parrish who's funding legislation. We have controllers. They came here, we remember Mr. Johnson and the budget, the drive, and also. Judicial branch, Washington, all the relevant players, they've got, so. Chair Parrish, please go ahead and report with your presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Carl Slater and members of the Budget and Finance Committee. It is good to be here on this April day. To consider legislation regarding the budget instruction manual, the controller's projection. And essentially the kickoff for the FY twenty six Navajo Nation comprehensive budget. Members of the committee, I know we have put in two full days of work sessions regarding the budget instruction manual itself. And we worked with various departments, including the Division of Human Resources, the Department of Personal Management. Working with the legislative and executive branch, we also included the Department of Personal Management. And Division, or Department of Human Research within the judicial branch as well. And we also, in these discussions, included the Office of the President and Vice President, the Speaker's Office. The Chief Justice Office upon behalf of the judicial branch regarding the budget instruction manual. And over that period of time, we were considering FY twenty five budget. Today, we've had several members, or we had several meetings regarding the instructions and discussions regarding. The planning base amount for the Navajo Nation. We have also met with chiefs of the branches individually and also collectively. And we thank the branch chiefs for their visions that I've received and the committee has received the priorities for the executive branch and also the judicial branch. And we do appreciate the time and effort that went into that discussion. I know that. A committee has continued to look over the expenditure rates, the budget transfers, the revisions, the. The external dollars that may impact the slow progression of expenditure of general funds. We've also took it into consideration. The proprietary funds and revenues that come directly into some of the programs that we've initiated, like tourism. And other programs in the Division of National Resources. So there are multiple. Multiple fund types that the committee have considered. So, members of the committee, this is nothing new. We've worked on this legislation together and before you, we do have several actions in this one legislation. So legislation fifty nine twenty five, this is final authority at the Budget and Finance Committee and. In this legislation, there's proposed planning base amount of one hundred and eighty five million dollars. Which is a breakdown of thirty million dollars to the fixed cost allocations. And members of the committee for the record, the thirty million, one hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. That amount was from FY twenty five. And when this legislation was dropped, there was no responses, there were no full responses to the Office of Management and Budget. When we did a call, we sent out memorandums to those recipients of fixed costs and nobody was responding to the Office of Management and Budget. So what we did, in order for the committee to meet their deadline, is that we inserted the fixed cost allocation from FY twenty five. So that breakdown, we can, Mr. Tocqueville, if you could pull the FY twenty five fixed costs document and distribute that to the committee so that they can see that breakdown. I also wanted to explain that the external cash match, there is a memorandum in this legislation that supports the eighty million dollars. The rest of the allocations, executives, legislators, judicial are. The next few items in the planning base amount that chapter is not administrated is also a. A similar cost to last year's budget. So taking the difference after the fixed costs, next, the cash match is taken out of the. Recommended planning base amounts, we've had sixteen million dollars to the legislative branch, fourteen million dollars to the judicial branch, and a hundred and two million. Eight hundred and thirty one thousand dollars to the executive branch. And what this, this one hundred and eighty five million dollars why this reaches the legislation today is because the committee has. Received reports of expenditure rates of the Navajo Nation government. And what is reflected in the budget instruction manual for FY twenty six is. We're, we're taking a look at the number of dollars that are locked up in vacancies and. The one hundred and eighty five million dollars is how much, but it's a plenty based amount with a five percent. With a five percent buffer to every single year that we've allocated. So the controller and our advisors took a look at expenditures for FY twenty four, FY twenty five. And, and looked back at allocations and decisions of this committee to make a determination for FY twenty six. If you were at the last BIM work session, you might recall that. Or in one of the previous meetings, I did ask the Office of Management and Budget and the Office of the Controller to take a look at our actual expenditure rate so that we could make a decision based on. The data that we have. We have received on our records. So that is a reflection of why this one hundred and eighty five million is proposed before you. I do know that there are amendments today and the committee wishes to go further in the discussion about the fixed cost allocations and welcome that. We also have an Office of Management and Budget who has provided and will provide those hard copies of recommendations regarding the fixed costs. Because that is a change, or it is a point of discussion that I think the committee should consider. Moving on from the funding base amount, this legislation also approves several exhibits. And that includes exhibit A, FY twenty six, general fund revenue projections, exhibit B, FY twenty six, IDC projected recovery for FY twenty six. FY twenty six budget preparation calendar, FY twenty six recommended cash match allocation of eight million dollars. FY twenty six budget instruction manual. So thank you to the Office of Management and Budget for preparing many of these exhibits so that this legislation can be read to the committee. We made many public announcements and we even tied it on our agenda that we would be meeting today on April twenty fourth at one PM to discuss the budget instruction manual legislation. With that said, that goes into our conclusion of the legislation. Vice Chairman Carl Slater, I stand your question.
Thanks very much, Chair. It is for. Your presentation and if I can get a motion to second. So, could you number your motion? Motion for delegate second? Second delegate, Chair Miyazi. Pretty much the floor is open for questions and discussion and then et cetera. So I credit you.
Hello. Appreciate it. Thank you. So what I just wanted, so some clarification, I have a few questions should be there. Just in terms. Just in terms of. What is created here in some of our BIM workshop conversations? I wanted to just go back to the external grants. If you could just help me understand, like for the record. What is required by BIM? Because what's required by BIM is not experience, is not the experience of individuals. Who have to go through this process. We wanted to change it, so just help me understand what's required now and if there's a need to amend. Or is this a matter of the programs adhering to the BIM? So that would be my first question.
Colleagues, do you want to respond to that or can you get another question? Let's go ahead and get another, let's go ahead. Chair Parrish, who's responding.
This, this microphone's been. All right. Thank you, Vice Chairman Carl Slater and again, Chair Amber Knessler-Crawdy. That is an excellent question. That is. A very similar question that I had for the directors of the this year's version of the budget instruction manual. So members of the committee, if you take a look at the. Exhibit E, which is the budget instruction manual for FY twenty six, and you turn to exhibit E's page twenty two under section C. It says, the grant application interview responsible for the division and the, actually, that's. That's kind of the middle of that, I think. So let's find that page from the few lines, but. That section of the, for those listening online, this, this section of the legislation is. It's explaining how the Navajo Nation is authorized to give out grants to external entities. And the process in doing so. Needs to be outlined. So that's section eleven of the Navajo Nation grants natural entities using external Navajo Nation funds you have on page twenty one, the purpose. A lot of these proposed amendments were proposed by the Department of Justice. And in the purpose, it states where the money could go and in B. The, B and C, those are, those are the sections that were, there's language added by the Department of Justice this year. So. In section B, the. The eligibility requirements for grants in section B, one, Navajo Nation grants are typically awarded to non-government entities established by the Navajo Nation grants. Awarded to private nonprofit or for-profit entities operating on or off the Navajo Nation reservation. When the proposed of the grant is consistent with the needs of priorities of the Navajo Nation entity applying for the grant is referred to after an applicant. So it proceeds to talk, to discuss and outline the requirements to be considered a Navajo. In section C, members of the committee, this is where we as council delegates sometimes. We, this language here, my question is in C three, A. Triple I, it says, if funding is for a capital project, budget form one and four, detailed budget justification and project process. Schedule which replaces budget form two. As a semicolon, and a project proposal reviewed and approved by Division of Community Development. I don't know what members of the committee are comfortable with that language, meaning that if an external entity, a nonprofit, someone in your community that's helping out with a capital project. That may be a certified architect, according to our BIMs, before they even get the project to you to. Apply for supplemental funding, grant funding, they would have to have to seek the approval from the Division of Community Development before. That application is processed. So I don't know what the committee, how the committee feels about that. I just wanted to draw your attention to that line there. Another section in the. Legislation, so Chair Crady, that's regarding the supplemental application requirements. And then to Vice Chairman Carl Slater, I also want to draw the committee, the section thirteen, requesting supplemental appropriations. This does impact our jobs as council delegates. And so you take a look at two and three. I just draw your attention there. If you're okay with that language, then. That may not need amendments, but I just want to raise that to the committee because if there are any amendments to that section, I would support that. Thank you.
I think very much Chair Parrish, Deli Crady is followed.
Okay, I appreciate that discussion. Staff, if we could continue to identify with the committee, who are going to be on that process. Understanding we're at a time constraint, so I don't have better language at this point, but I do want to offer an amendment. And it's an amendment regarding who's considered external. And so I do have, and I want to appreciate all our legislative council was able to draft. That amendment. So it's staff, I believe you have it, it's for exhibit D, page five, section two.
For your reading or.
I just wanted to keep if. I could, I could. So exhibit E, page five, section.
Colleagues, at three ten PM, there was an amendment, an email sent out by Mr. Lowell and it includes three different amendments, so. Deli Crady is going to read from one of those right now. Or do you want? Okay, Ronnie hasn't had, so Mr. Crady, please go ahead and read the.
Vice Chairman Slater, members of Budget Finance Committee, you have amendment number one, legislation number zero zero five nine dash two five. One, exhibit E, page five, section two, add the language as indicated below. Four, branch needs. Four point two, the Navajo Nations Executive Branch, all programs, organization, boards, commissions. And the like established under the executive branch, as well as the NAC College and National Technical University. Nineteen, external entity means any of the organization, businesses, corporation, companies, and other individuals that are not part of the Navajo Nation government or part of any other one hundred and ten chapters, including enterprises. Authorities or corporations that may be affiliated with the Navajo Nation but are not part of the Navajo Nation government. Two, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraph sections and exhibit as necessary and appropriate, the Office of Legislative Services. Office of Legislative Council are authorized by technical editors to this legislature and exhibit to employ the Navajo Nation council of ten. This amendment is specifically inconsistent with any other amendments which language that we consign to this amendment. Vice Chairman Slater, members of Budget Finance Committee, that is the number one running to the record.
Deli Crady, is that what you would like to propose?
Yes.
Are you motion, Deli Crady is your second? Colleagues, any discussion? Not hearing any, much of a vote. Chair Parrish, how do you vote?
Vote green.
Vote green. Deli Crady, Chair Miyazi?
Green.
Deli Crady?
Green.
Deli Crady, Esther Miyazi? Thank you. Vote, five fingers, your opponent, Vice Chair not quoting. Amendment number one passes as read to the record. Ready members, the floor is open. Deli Miyazi, you're recognized. I believe there's an amendment and it's included in this three ten, yeah, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody, and I'd like to.
Vice Chairman Slater, members of Budget Finance Committee, this is amendment number two, the legislation number zero zero five nine dash two five. One, exhibit E, page five, section one, as the following is listed, section one, the section one, authority purpose. Guiding principles for budget preparation. All budget preparation are expected to reflect the organization's commitment to integrity, transparency, accountability. Leadership has established a strong tone and the top setting a clear expectation for ethical conduct, fiscal responsibility, compliance with internal policies and external regulations. Budget submission must be upheld by these values by providing accurate and complete financial information justified or classified, clear data-driven, rational. Ensuring alignments. With strategy priorities and policies and compliant with established internal controls and providing approval process by upholding this standard, all contributors. Not maintaining public trust and support the long-term sustainability of our financial operations. And two, the Office of Management Budget is required to make the changes in the budget instruction manual consistent with the amendments provided by the Budget Finance Committee. Read and renumber, reletter succeeding paragraphs, such as exhibit as necessary and appropriate, the Office of. The Office of Legislative Services, the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to technically edit this legislation and exhibit to employ the Navajo Nation Councils of ten. This amendment is specifically inconsistent with any other amendments which language must be performed to this amendment. Vice Chair Slater, members of Budget Finance Committee, that is legislation number zero zero five nine eight dash two five, ready to record.
But I told you, doesn't it, forms what you want? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Vice Chair Parrish, seconds. Any discussion, colleagues? Not hearing any, Chair Parrish, how do you vote?
Okay.
Deli, again, vote green, Deli Gazi?
Green.
Green, Deli, good, sorry, Deli, Sheriff Gazi, Deli, Esther Gazi, vote for green. And, uh, Deli Crowdy.
I know, pretty sure.
And Deli Crowdy with screen, five fingers are imposed by Chair not quoting. Colleagues, maybe one second, that's enough, if you want to.
Would she motion or second?
Deli, oh, sorry, Deli Parrish, he did second, but I recognize. Deli Parrish.
Means everybody's like, they're in scouts of honor.
Okay, uh, three members, you have two amendments to legislation that have passed. For is open, any questions, discussion, further amendments?
Yes, any questions?
Questions, discussion, amendments? All right, Deli, right, members?
Uh, yes, appreciated, if you were complaining, I just want to briefly go over the fixed cost. So, um, do we need an amendment to adjust the fixed cost? Because it's not clear in terms of, there's two additional, or there's a substantial change of nine million dollars. Um, so I would want to ask the legislative council, um, if we need to, uh, look at that amendment and lawyer determining. Then I can ask some questions to give you time to develop the amendment, but, um, we just received this document from O M D. Uh, right, as the committee was, um, you know, this was dropped in Friday. So a best practice would be to either provide this through the public comment or notify the committee that there would be a change. And the fixed cost is now that's going to change all of the other accounting terms. So I just wanted to see if we did a word on that amendment, and I could ask some clarifying questions. Or get some guidance in terms of how we can forward, I'm going to put them.
Uh, thank you very much, I'm going to recognize legislative council, let's respond to Deli Crowdy. We asked for the.
Sure, uh, but sure, that, uh, Deli. But, uh, but thank you, Chair, Deli, but yes, it's still required amendment, um. You don't need an explanation, because document not yet in, that's completely, that's a issue.
How much time do you need?
Five minutes?
I'll go to the next, you did it.
You want us to answer?
Yeah, on a different topic, I don't, I don't know who's going to sponsor that.
You, you want to, you?
Not high.
I'll say that one.
Uh, Deli Crowdy, right next, thank you.
Well, well, maybe, I don't know, um, okay. Appreciate it, we talked about the external grants and appreciate, uh, Deli, Carolyn Gazi's amendment on, um. The intent of this budget process is to be, um, honest. Having paper D and really look and have data-driven decisions, because we read the BIM. There is a lot of language in there that requires all of the budgets not needing to be based on the performance. But this acting partnership with O M D, the programs and the oversight. But the program is not providing services, um, there should be a discussion with oversight. And so I would just ask the sponsor as our chair of budget finance, um. Identify and if you need this site, the BIM we can, but it's basically during the, um. Basically, the, the site that talks about budget form two. I have never seen it, maybe because our oversight could have some limits, but I've never seen correspondence from O M D. On like a low performance rating, or how the BIM, what I'm trying to be is like, we have the BIM, it's in the law. For enforcing it, and then who's the enforcer of the BIM? And if then is it the oversight, the Budget and Finance Committee then to highlight or ask, oh, and the. How are you enforcing this position, this? You know, portion of the BIM, because that's where I feel we're also getting out of control. I don't think you would have an amount of vacancies that we have budgeted if there was some performance-based budgeting. Because how can you have. Very like superior rating for your performance if you're phonetically at thirty percent capacity? So it just doesn't make sense unless our programs are under. Like are just, you know, creating performance measures that they can master. But we're not providing the services that are employed. And if no one on the nation is acknowledging based on their vacancies. That impacts their performance.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm going to put that as a red flag. Because the program itself, it should have, because the BIM also requires an annual plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I've never seen an annual plan in the last eleven years of going through the Navajo Nation budget. And so that's another requirement that's in the BIM, so who enforces that annual plan? These the worst these budget forms moving forward, and so that's to all of the three branch change. That that provision should be enforced. There should be a mechanism so that we are making sure you're utilizing data, utilizing the best numbers. Um, instead of just suffice to access more dollars. So the people demanded our BIM and the time energy that's put into the management. And so I wanted to ask, then, if we're performance-based and people are not performing, then what? What's the vision for vacancies, we've talked about this a little bit in terms of. If the recommendation was based on a three-year expenditure, obviously vacancies are not, it's, you know, they're not considered. So, um, and if to that the BIM. There was a change for vacancies to be funded at part-time, so what is that, one thousand? Is that one thousand eighty-eight or one thousand forty-four, right, one thousand forty-four? Um, I just want to see our B, our B then, is the vision for those programs? Because they haven't funded these vacancies, I don't know how like long-term, and then we've asked H R, we haven't received that. Information to base like, how many of these vacancies are longstanding, there was a report. Provided to the committee and we requested additional information. I haven't received that, so Mr. Tawhi, if you have that update from the H R, that would be great, because we did ask for long-term vacancies. But now as we're talking about the budget, um, as sponsored the legislation, how do you envision? Then programs to move forward with those vacancies, if we're, we're. Agreeing that we should look at three-year expenditure terms, but I just see that as like, some idea run to understand. I thought, well, maybe that'll just be in the unmet need request, is the answer, but just help me. As, as we're, as we're doing this work, I just need to know specifically on where we're going with this making, thinking part there.
Chair Parrish, leave questions here, so often additions to other members of your advisors, so I'll kind of forward back over to you.
Thank you Vice Chairman Prossiter and, uh, Vice Chair Amber Kennes for Crowdy, those are excellent questions. Um, regarding the budget form two, we had a member in the Office of Management and Budget reach out to us. Uh, Ms. Largo, and she sent out, uh, recommendations, and she was, I believe she was a part of the discussion at the first work session. And we reviewed the language in the performance-based budgeting, at the time, there was some very, um. There were some, uh, fairly, uh, there, there were some. Some consequences that were outlined and recommended from O M D at that time. And since then, um, you'll see on page ten of the budget instruction manual in section three. These, uh, section A, section B, section C, and section D. Uh, that is continued, uh, that, that is very similar to last year, but I want to draw your attention to section E. Uh, this section of performance, uh, program performance non-compliance, this was edited. By Miss Elba Tom, but she worked directly with the policy management section. Um, in trying to identify potential consequences, and so. What Ms. Elba Tom had proposed here is that, and when the budgets are being created, the SMART goals. Um, they can be specifically measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, that's what SMART stands for. But I want to go directly to the first step, second step, and the second, the third step, if there is no compliance. So the first step, this is new language to the budget instruction manual, the, the first step. If O M D identifies a program that is in non-compliance, they are going to issue a written warning through a memorandum to the program, the division, and branch management. So that this is a part of a management decision and how they want to proceed with corrective action. And, um, O M D will be available to assist the program's management to help them further understand the non-compliance. Um, and, uh, working on this document with, um, the Office of Legislative Council, Office of Management and Budget. I have, I have, um, ensured that the Budget and Finance Committee will also be notified if that non-compliance. So if you look at the step one, um, Budget and Finance Committee will be notified of that non-compliance, and so we'll just be aware. Um, as the program is pursuing, pursuing corrective action, uh, not that. We would, uh, there's no action from Budget and Finance at that, at that point, but we would be aware of it. So this is new language to the BIM this year, the second step, if there's non-performance. So the first step is non-compliance, meaning that there's no reporting back to O M D. The second step, if there's not, non-performance continues, um. O M D shall notify in writing to the branch division and appropriate oversight committee, this is when the oversight committee gets involved. So if a program is being non-compliant further, not listening to their management, O M D will notify the oversight committee. To let them know that there continued non-performance, uh, regarding budget form two. Um, and they'll work on the corrective action and remediation, uh, with the oversight committee. But O M D will continue to notify Budget and Finance on the status of that non-compliance and non-performance. The third step, the is non-performance continues, the last step. The Office of Management and Budget, the management will be advised by, uh, by O M D that formal remediation action should be taken. This may include sanctions available in personal policies and procedures, uh, manual and possible funding consequences. E.g., travel restrictions, budget revision calls, and O M D shall not notify Budget and Finance Committee. So at that point, if they, if any program, department, division is, is at stage three. Uh, we can work on that remediation plan, either through, uh, consideration of legislative concern or condition of appropriation. But at every point that a program, division, department is not setting the SMART goals, if their, these SMART goals are too low. And they're not performing, O M D's policy and administrative division are going to continue to monitor that, so just want to thank Ms. Tom for, um. Kind of smoothing, smoothening out that language so that it's user-friendly and that programs, departments, and divisions are aware of those changes. Uh, and how there are no, um, there, there, there will be steps increasing consequences that we continue. So it's, it's direct here in the BIM that if there's non-compliance, that is a departure from duty. And responsibility for that program, department, and division to have those, those, uh, budget forms available, um, to the Office of Management and Budget, so. That's the first set of questions, um, that you asked Chair Amber Kennes for Crowdy, uh, regarding performance-based budgeting. And, um. To your questions regarding vacancy and the collaboration between the Division of Human Resources, um, and the notion towards the vacancy number. Um, we can start looking at that portion of the BIM, um, in the budget instruction manual draft, um. The, the, the one point I made to the committee that. Uh, I, I presented this concept to the committee that regardless of the position being filled or not. The fringe benefit rate should be collected, so I want to point to, um. Section eight, on page eighteen of the legislation, at the very top, you have. Six, uh, object code two nine zero zero fringe benefit rates under the one, underneath the. The object code, the fringe benefit rate shall be deducted from every vacant Navajo Nation position budgeted in the fiscal year. So what this will encourage is that those branches, departments, and divisions that are applying to the. Continue to budget for vacancies, and these vacancies are not being filled, they're not helping the department and division to. Fulfill their, their goals, their SMART goals here, they really need to take consideration whether one is better utilized. In vacancy holdings or if you utilize to support, um, supplies and other necessities for confidential goals. That was the first place I'd like to draw your attention to, the second portion is regarding the vacancies. So the vacancies, um, I did talk to Mr. See the Tawhi, Mr. See the Tawhi did not have any recommendations. Uh, that were different from last year, however, in section eight.
Okay.
The, uh, personal budgets by object code, the very first one, the first object, the two one one zero, vertical personnel. Under item B, item B in this section, it was recommended by the Department of Justice for two, for the full. Um, amounts of time, the twenty-eight hours to be put, uh, to be budgeted for. However, um, after this further discussion, um, with the Division of Human Resources. And also the committee has been apprised of these discussions, and the public has been, uh, part of these discussions that are last few. Uh, reports regarding the vacancies is that, um, in order to create a new position. Or to, to continue to have a vacant position, but you haven't started to advertise the position, and there's no new interested people, it takes about. Three quarters of the year, uh, one quarter of the year, one quarter of the year to, to fully staff that position, so that leaves you about three, three quarters of that year. So after discussion with Ms. Tawhi, uh, the recommendation is one thousand and forty, forty-four hours.
Wow.
Um, to, uh, to be filled or to, um, to recommend for, for the budget process. Um, regarding vacancies.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I also want to state, and C, for it says propose new positions, it says. Under item number four, new positions must be approved by budget prior to budget classification, and, um. There's also a section here that says if the position is not filled. Let's see, vacant positions prior to vacant position, or still have some, but for a salary, the proposed classification, um. Once I find that section regarding, if the position is not filled. Then that position cannot be filled in the next fiscal year. Taking hold of, let's see where I remember reading that section. Oh, um, oh, yes, and members of the committee who declared type of language and, um, unfunded positions. It says in the amendment that an occupied position is eliminated due to circumstances, non-essential controls, and have a mission. Um, the position is, sort of, questioning is terminated, position is not refunded, and funds are not available to continue program operations. The program shall adhere to, um, and other applicable laws and regulations. Filled positions resulting in displacement of employees shall be documented on budget form five as a layup. Elimination of a vacant position shall be documented as a polish, so that language I will clarify, members of the committee. So looking for intention, I was referring to one of the members of the. So this is regarding, instead, like, uh the, the position is not filled. Once I find that uh section, then I will respond to that question regarding vacancies. Vice Chair Crossley, um those are the highlights that I would like to bring to this meeting's attention per the questions from Chair Amber Canes of Cording.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair. Any members have further questions or discussion?
Um yeah, so I just want to thank Asia for um referring. Uh that information. To the committee and referring back to the BIM, because the expectation as an oversight is. I think we need to start monitoring the BIM. So that programs not only comply with the BIM. But that there will be consequences if they do not comply with the BIM. Because this way of just doing things with our funding is unacceptable. And for individuals who have learned how to usurp the system should be held accountable. And they should be banned from ever working on navigation again. Because there's clear policy and procedure. And if they do not want to follow them. If it's not like a white-collar crime, we should at least say, if you knowingly and you've been told that this is. Not following laws, policies, procedures, regulations. That has to be documented. And then we could create an entity then that will. That can do some harsh. If it doesn't lead to the threshold of, let's say, white-collar crimes, there should at least be something. And if, you know, how HR, we just really need to dig in if these, if they're being written up. If the policy manual is being used. And especially if it's um political appointees, then this will need to be. Uh of time now that we talk about what would be the consequences of a, a political appointee. I would go as far as saying a lifetime ban. But if, if the intent is there to reroute the system. Then he really don't need you as a navigation employee. Because all you're doing is creating the liability in the future. And we're seeing that now, um. That's why we don't have broadband in our communities, because we're bad actors. And it just continues happening. So I appreciate that recommendation. We'll figure out a way how to track that more and as an oversight. I don't want to be someone's manager, but I'm saying that on the record. Because those are questions I'm going to be asking during the budget process. And so if it goes through the executive, legislative. And exec um judicial budget reviews and it's not caught. Then those individuals who sign the budget and approve it also need to be held accountable. It's everybody at every layer, everybody should know the rules if there are previous documents. And that's why it's clearly stated in the Appropriations Act. And all of those individuals should be listening to this conversation. It's a public meeting and if they had any comments or questions, there was a five-day. Comment period, we were at council, all of us are accessible via Gmail. And so um there's very minimal interaction at this point. But it's devastating when we can't even catch this, that we can't even level it up rather than. Uh so I appreciate that you went over, went already in the document. Um I just want to speak when, so for vacancies. Is the, is, is the request then to put vacancies on a net need? Or, uh that's what I just need to know, is what am I, um what are we going to consider? When uh programs are saying they, they need them. I just got HR's report. And so giving us a report right now, like minutes or while we're doing. Or while we're, because we legally have the past, right? So everybody know, it's a law, it's a law that's been in there thirty-five years, nobody, nobody idiots. Nobody followed the rules. And so it's hard for me to make any amendments when we were, when we are receiving a report. There is a discussion, the debate. So we could have time maybe later to look at the issue with longer vacancies and how that impacts. Uh the program's budgets, but I can't do that right now. I can't expect the committee to have a thorough discussion. And then put all of the pressure on our legislative council to develop amendments to meet that need. I think with this three-year um. Trends, spending trends, you know, who, who's ever following the budgets. For the programs understand these um trends. They understand the quality of reports that are produced by O M B and O O C. They've heard the committee talk about vacancies and um. So I just think at this point, we, I don't think I have an answer that I would feel comfortable at right now. And so I need the program to just try to do the best they can when it comes to vacancy. And make sure that there are fully uh budgeting produced by the commission. So I do want to state that um my next question.
Vice, vice.
Was.
Chair Cording, I would like you to add to the vacancy.
Okay, I'll go back, um uh pro temp, if there's any follow-up and response regarding vacancy, I appreciate it.
So. Uh Chair, thank you.
Let's see.
Okay, thank you. Um thank you Chair Amber Canes of Cording, that's your question regarding, should the committee expect vacancies um as, and that needs, I believe so. This committee has articulated that we should prioritize current positions, current navigation employees that are filling positions. Um as they are continuing to serve the nation. Um as everyone else's committees are aware that are, that there are minimal, if not any, new revenues coming into the nation at this time. And we're primarily depending on our investments and regarding the markets. We don't know how much money will continue to come as the nation to support. Um to support the government's expenditures uh regarding the operating of the, of the nation. There is, there is definitely some volatility there. And I want to um again reestablish what the committee has discussed in, in our um, in our public meetings. Is that we are, we have continued to rely on our data and to pursue um discussions on using actual dollars in our bank account for a budget. I know that's not what the appropriation uh law states today. But as we continue to work with the controller, I know the committee will continue to, to pursue that data. So that we can uh take a look at that, those dollars in our pocket. The speaker did also mention that that is her priority as well to ensure that we don't um overspend dollars that we don't have. I don't know how that sounds financial practice if we're just pretending. Um and, and just going off of our pretend numbers. So I want to add that limit and then members of the committee, I did find a section I was referring to, it's on page seventeen. Uh the. Um the personnel section eight, so. Under section eight of the BIM personnel briefing and it's under the funding, so. Oh no. Something seventeen, that's the very top. Oh, it's the, the object code one one, one one zero, regular personnel. At the very top under I says positions that remain unfunded for twelve consecutive months. So shall not be available for the next, the middle of a new PCQ. So again, um this goes back to the budgeting practices. And if we don't have those uh positions available, then. We also have to take a look at how much time it encourages maybe have to reset in a PCQ. So if uh the committee continues to um take all of these into consideration regarding the. Uh budget instruction manual, I know we'll see uh extensive amount of vacancies. But I think that we should uh prioritize our current positions that are filled on the navigation. Um Vice Chair, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Any members have further questions or discussion? Colleagues, I know that this all is working on. Folks have asked for. Have we updated legislation? They can either, you would like to continue?
I have another question.
Okay. Please go right ahead.
Uh appreciated, um. I'm gonna ask the, my next question regarding retirement. And so today's interview also are on the retirement.
Yeah.
Um committee, I just need to understand, you know, the fixed cost and where we're at with retirement. Um can you help me understand how that impacts the budget instruction manual? Or where would we see any additional modifications? Because I'm thinking now if we're, how many employees they consider in that retirement? Um. When the consultants talk about retirement, say, they want like benefits. So if we have all of the vacancies, how do we continue to support retirement to maintain uh at the need? And there was also a request for an increase of retirement, like a COLA payment. Is, is that the discussion we should have now? Or is that going to be during the budget, like as a possible unmet need? Um I'm not sure, and this is the first time probably Andrea's um chat is carried about it. So I just want to make sure we have that conversation so we, so that we're prepared for that discussion um coming forward to the committee during the budget process. Yeah.
Uh thank you very much. We're going to have a response to that question and then we're going to take that private recess after, just.
Okay, thank you, Chair, Chair Amber Canes of Cording. I was uh taking a look at the fixed costs for the FY twenty-five budget. And the FY twenty-five budget, the retirement office did not receive an increase. Uh so they, they received zero dollars in the FY twenty-five budget. And in the FY twenty-six fixed costs, they're also requesting zero dollars. And the reason why is because um the retirement uh portfolios have done very well. And the retirement plan is actually uh in the ninety percent side, so it's, it's, it's fairly healthy. If um, you know, ninety percent of our workforce retired today, so they would have their benefits available to them. So in regards to the discussion about the COLA and how that can, um the committee can take action on that. Uh in two thousand twenty-three. Actually, the ARPA committee, we passed a resolution in. July, July two thousand twenty, oh, this is less than, less than. June? June? Oh, sorry, this is not my legislation request. Let's see the different, okay. So I pulled up the resolution, the ARPA's committee resolution zero three twenty-three. Uh approving and recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the approval and proposed amendments. The retirement plan for employees of the navigation and participating affiliate, affiliates. To implement a cost of living increase for the navigation retirees effective October first, two thousand twenty-three. So this COLA recommendation was actually passed on June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And I put in a legislation request shortly after. So I was just notified that I got reassigned to this role. And um that legislation is ready for that recommendation to come back to Budget and Finance. That recommendation is for a COLA um for our retirees. And that is proposed at three percent. Um so that can, um once, once I, once we get out of committee today, I hope the Office of Legislative Services is still open. So I can drop that legislation. Um but we can continue to have that discussion and that would be potentially a request as a one-time allocation for a COLA. Um so that we can. A retro um. It'll be retro.
Ten one?
It would be retroactive to the date that the recommendation was came, that the. When our back, in the ARPA resolution, it said that it would be effective as of October first, two thousand twenty-three. And so we can figure out those numbers and bring that before the committee. But as the time that that was recommended to um. Uh voted on by ARPA, it was at three percent. So Miss Andrea Holmes is here uh to state that it will. Cost approximately sixteen hundred million dollars.
We're, we're all from.
So a, so a three percent COLA will cost the nation sixteen point three million dollars. But that one decision will come before the committee, before we include it in context about it.
We're all from.
Yep. Thank you, Vice Chair Crossley, and thank you, Chair Amber Canes of Cording.
Uh thank you very much, colleagues. We're going to resolve ourselves into a, I'm going to say that you've been in a recess until four P M. So that you can just touch base with Miss Wall and a few different items and respond to as well. So uh in order of the room, you can stretch your legs, go. It was fun, right? Thank you. Sorry. Uh, Chair. Uh, thank you, everyone. It's currently four oh two, so we're a few minutes past our time we're gonna do. But our chief. Our Legislative Council is doing a final review of the final events that we'll probably be offering today. That will be read into the record and soon and offered by colleagues. We'll remain in recess for about another three minutes to continue the review of that. And we'll touch base again in four oh five. Thank you.
Chief Pro-Tech, right? Okay, Legislative Council is reviewing the amendment that we put together. And Ravi is going to tell us specifics. There are colleagues who got an opportunity to review them. You know, there's a few issues when it comes to budget instructions and budget planning, and we've talked about this in the chat on here. The record where essentially programs have been coerced into using funding from particular businesses to fund the activities of a different business, different program. And other times they more willingly do that, but it's one of those things where the control is set on the record. What's the point of having a budget if someone can just command that that money is going to be used by this program? Essentially, you know, if the US president is able to just refund from the Department of Defense all the way over into EPA, which I don't support, but you know, those are things. So what's the point of having a budget? And Title 12 says the appropriate things that are supposed to be confined within this box unless there's a modification or transfer for the call, then our ER will issue a protocol. So documented instances of those types of things happen where you're skirting Title 12, you're skirting that by Point 5 budget instruction manual and paying for activities of other programs. So that's, that's one of the discussions that we were having and seeing if there's any way to continue to, you know, work on that, but let me just check real quick with our Legislative Council and we'll see if we're ready. Or do you need to change this up?
No, yeah, not touching it.
We're going to do a comprehensive.
Carl, Carl identified himself as a point of contact.
Oh, point of contact. Okay.
Uh, thank you very much, Anna. We're very good with this. Um, I, well, I will by the way tell her. And thank you colleagues for your contributions and thank you very much, Mr. Lowell, for bearing to everyone.
Our assertion, your blogs are starting everything. Is that true?
We have one more amendment. We have two amendments to the legislation. One of them was related to how funding is distributed to the institutions of higher education. And is it a ten-year expenditure plan or a $12 million set aside for the higher education grant plan? Please explain. And that has expired at this point, but there are any concerns from the committee and from the President's office that I'd like to continue expanding this for this year. We'll look at how we can have that set aside for institutions of higher education going forward. So of course that split, I think that will turn into a college. There are the other amendments. Related to veracity and true ethical standards, representation of budget documentation, and making sure that that is fulfilled in the conference of 26. Colleagues, this Lowell is going to shut down the event now. And I guess I won't. If you want to wait for everyone to review it. Or is it going to run?
No, it's going to everyone.
So I think, you know, the committee has expressed their willingness to review unmet needs in this budget process, prioritize that, make sure that there is the same logical method for how we consider funding at the end of the day. Fundamentally, the, this legislation is the instructions for the budget, how to plan for it, and then also it includes in the venue implementation side of things. And as we've discussed, you know, over the past year, we really think we want to disaggregate, you know, split those two things in half so that we can focus on implementation issues and not have it be tied up with the budget planning process, which can end up uh, being too much to do all at one time. And we need to be able to be in addition to that, it will prescribe the planning amounts across three branches with some, if this amendment goes through, with some projected ideas about how to spend on that.
Okay.
That's before 2.3.
Yes.
That's including it to the big broken down as a separate.
We want it broken down. Okay, but why? Because that's the same thing you did on six. We're not, we're not putting it into the different branch, are we?
I just want to have judicial branch listed twice. I don't, I thought it was just judicial branch, but.
No, it's judicial branch hyphen. What is it that you need?
It's contractual services and repairs and things. The services are for security and for translation. Okay, let's see. Anything else, anything else? Keep going.
I just didn't know, Ronnie, do you have these numbers without anyone in tradition? Yeah. And then is number seven, right?
Yes. I already calculated them up. It's correct. So three, three. Two thirty-eight for eight.
Right now, this amendment is looking at some items that are related to fixed costs, so.
Are something that I have on my notes, um, since we do have the acting director of the division. What is the current update on the pay scale increase for our, for our workers last time? Let us see the report. Is that 50%? Are we at 100%? So it's considered into this budget? Uh, that would be my request. Thank you. Give me the sponsor and then if you want to ask the acting director.
Bert, give him your switches. I think, I have no commentary. Uh, Chair Paris, that's what I'm referring to you and, uh, mention this stuff before yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair Charles Slater. I will defer the question to Mr. Cedar's side.
Please come on up.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Slater and honorable members of the Budget and Finance Committee. With response to your question, honorable front, currently the comprehensive compensation study is about 80% complete. And we would like to include it in the FY '26 comprehensive budget. So we are working, uh, we did meet with REBW last week and we're looking at some of the numbers. We found a few discrepancies, so we did meet with them and now we have the capability of validating some of those numbers. So our team is working on it right now and we hope to get back to you as soon as we complete that for a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I apologize, Vice Chair Trump. Thank you, Vice Chair. Pleasure, John.
I mean, sorry, I don't know. Back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taddy. Thank you very much, Chair Paris, for sponsoring. I'd like to give a follow-up on that. Welcome to the recording, if you're putting numbers to post-update amendment to reflect what the requested has been emailed out. Notice it reads for minimum, or you did. That's, wait, so what's your timeline? He said it's 85%? 80%? Okay. Who, who's candidate in your office as a direct under you or is it, is there a specific person who's out over here? Go right ahead.
Ms. Taddy? Thank you, Chair Slater. Currently, it is still partially underneath and Serenity McGow, who is the delegated classification and pay manager within the Department of Personnel Management as well as our position control analyst, Garrett Sosie, and the HR directive. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, I just, I know I've reported a bunch of emails back and forth to REBW and it seems like there's been weeks at a time where you can't, you can't, or I'd say your resources are not responsive, there's been things with funding, I just personally want to make sure, you know, there's one person who's responsible and seeing it through because it's called, I think, government, business, and the activities. It's not the best way to get things going. But we also need those numbers to be included in this, and that's going to be a pretty big asset change. So sooner than later, better. Is there a question or is that a follow-up on this? Okay, so just stay there.
Uh, yes, thank you. So just looking at exhibits of the legislation. It was identified as in all the research that we need to take action on the there um, by April 30th, so that lives in timeline. So Chair, right now, um, you know, you've been promised our employees, the implementation of this pay plan. Uh, even if the 2018 study was considered outdated. I just think there has to be some priorities set because we can't add but we have no number right now, what does that look like, even consider to add. So, um, if we could prioritize that in, in working with the different offices uh, to know what that would actually look like because on Monday, all of divisions, you're going to be preparing your, your budgets. So I'm not sure how this was planned out if programs are going to start preparing their budgets on Monday. And the cost of the employees, I think, is like the budget two-fourth? No, budget three?
Form four?
Form four, and that's the amount. And so I, I just think I'm not exactly sure how this will be implemented. And I know, I know the committee had brought this up maybe two months ago. So, um, it just it's just, um, I don't know, I just think our employees deserve this amount of money. They work hard. And we've been waiting at least two years to implement. So I'm not sure how that's going to look like in the future, but we could help with the Office of President, Vice President, and how we anticipate implementing uh, this salary adjustment. Um, and then how that's going to reflect in the budget. And I know what's going to be, um, comments, they have some comments on their from, from today, their comments on the budget instruction manual. And it just, I just need to know then, um, when we're going to have that conversation. I, I don't think we can have that conversation by Monday. So we just lost an opportunity to possibly include that into our fiscal year 2026 uh, budget. And if, are we going to anticipate um, like some retro pay, like we talked about the COLA? If employees just have been waiting for the executive program to finally implement so that we can, uh, fund that program, that would be something I would consider and looking at how we can. But I do know how we had hazard pay. There was, um, some challenges on implementing that equitably. And so that's why I'm just concerned how that'll be implemented. And you have a question. I'm not sure, uh, Pro-Tech or sponsor, if you've seen the memo from 20 or from, uh, pockets of the O and B, they get today. Uh, it looks like there's some memos shown in red. I just, I just need to know, um, sponsor, were you working with an amendment with O and B? It was considered, um, technical where our staff is looking at the different, um, areas. So I, I just get to know if that's something else to me to start preparing, uh, Pro-Tech or sponsor. Thank you.
You're referring to first one, the one that we have right now, Smolty?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we have, uh, two questions, but going back to Chair. And just real quick. I think it's personal life savings fund. If we do it at budgeting, you know, if they do deliver their budgets, you know, salary study, so navigation employees who are listening right now, there's no pressures coming from the committee or the the branch in terms of budgeting for that. You can't budget for suffering, you don't have to do it. So I'm definitely going to be considering that and using the personal life savings fund. Uh, Chair Paris, for a few questions, we'll go ahead and go back to you, but real quick, uh, I will also let it go down. I'm not offering, I'm, so it's up to the committee. Chair?
Thank you, Vice Chair Charles Slater. Members of the Budget and Finance Committee, thank you, Chairman Eric Nuss, so proud of you. Uh, your question regarding the case study, as Miss Taddy had, uh, reported to the committee today and many times before. Uh, it sounds like the case study is not available to implement at this time. However, uh, members of the committee, I do want to remind us that this is, as Vice Chair Crossiter had mentioned, this is a discussion we can have when, when, um, when putting together a comprehensive budget. Because there are different funding types that the comprehensive budget comprises of. There's the, the revenues. Also, we have the personal, um, the permanent trust fund excess, and then you have the personal loss fund as well. So as Vice Chair Crossiter has mentioned, that, um, in CBA 66.3, that's the government's documents that states that that is an allocation to you, that is the personal loss fund. So, um, Ms. Taddy, I think we can continue to have that discussion when it comes to general wage adjustment and bonus bonuses and also how to implement that case study and also the judicial branch. Members of the committee, I, um, had a discussion this week at the Navigation Council Spring Session and the judicial branch has a case study that they are near completion. It's cost to about $80,000 to complete for the employees in the judicial branch. And that is outside the scope that, uh, Ms. Taddy's case study is comprising. So it sounds to me that Ms. Taddy and the judicial branch and the O and B are working on how to distribute those funds so that the judicial branch can access those dollars in this fiscal year. Because that was an allocation made in FY '25 budget, but it does sound like, um, O and B is working on getting the funds to the judicial branch, but members of the committee, uh, that discussion regarding the case study, I think we believe we have, um, after this legislation is considered, I'd like to ask if we should, uh, consider that directed to O and B, so it's on the record. Um, so that is a recommendation from Mr. Viall. But the second question you asked about the memorandum passed out by Mr. Viall. Um, these are amendments and, um, I can defer the question over to Ms. Lowell to see if this is a technical amendments that could be authorized by O and B to make. Otherwise, the committee, I'd like to ask if we could, uh, consider this as an amendment, if the, if this is not considered a technical amendment. Thank you, Vice Chair Crossiter.
Did you hear a question?
If she's good with it, then.
Whoa, the door? Blood all flowing? You guys want me to plug my salad?
I don't have any flies over here, so. I don't have any flies over here, so.
It's fine to do the to do the document that O and B provided.
Okay. Committee members, I think we are at our final amendments for the amendment number three. So any further questions?
Vice Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, I would ask you a question. Thank you. Please go ahead and ask.
Is this on the amendments?
We haven't done the amendments.
Okay.
Maybe this is an answer to a question that I might not have. I just want to notify the committee that O and B and this goes with Chair and we're kind of just saying, you know, we've had public meetings on the BIM and now everybody wants to turn in their assignments at the very last minute. So I've been notified that Mr. Sean and Dale has updated insurance rates, so if that information does come to the committee today, I do want to raise that now. I don't have that information right now in front of me and it's not in my email, but Ms. Elvett Tom is corresponding with Mr. Sean and Dale. So this is the only point I'd like to raise at this time, Vice Chair Cross.
All right, thank you. So just getting through the practical effect is that the insurance service memorialized the budget in churches, that's what people used to budget there. In terms of not gonna affect any of the branches or any of those things. Or they more or less? Because the amount that's, the amount that's in the fixed costs is increasing insurance. So for insurable property or we just became a lot riskier?
Just ask for Sean to send us the email.
It's on the line.
I mean, if we're away that long, yeah. And this is ridiculous. This is packed with ridiculous. Mr. Austin, you're here representing the executive branch, you're gonna take the raft right now. You gotta lift your programs to the shape. Oh, we can't receive documents the day of. I put a legislation request in a few weeks ago saying that all proposed amendments have to be posted on the website twenty-four hours in advance, and I really hope that Legislative Council gets that passed very soon because the time, completing something will always expand whatever the timeframe is for completing it. People view when the gap gets hit after we vote as sort of time up until they can get something done, so. All of these are features of executive branch programs that we need for inclusion in this and when did you post the agenda for this, Mr. Todd? Two weeks ago? Oh, we did announce it last, yes.
It was voted on the last meeting.
Sorry, it was voted on the last meeting, yes. And so that's why we invite the executive branch, you know, at least listen in, that they mark these things down. And I know that Chair is also working on the O and B, the OLS, the OLC, everyone to get, collect this information, so. Thank you for nodding and acknowledging that this is something we need to do better on together. Did you get, yeah, Congress sent us. Did you get a copy of these rates? No, and you don't have any this time? Okay, so committee, it's up to you on how you want to proceed forward. Maybe you could authorize an administrative change later for the insurance rates?
Just tell me where it is, where it is in this.
Mr. Dale, you're on the line.
Right here. It's on.
Anyone from Division General Services or Insurance Services Department?
It's on section eleven B.
We've got Dr. Andy Nettis here on the oversight. Fill our pain.
Yeah, kind of a co-oversight.
No, it's section nine B.
So we don't know what the new rate is? Well, we need this information, so how are they gonna do their budget?
It's not, when do you guys, when do you guys request this stuff? It can be a formal, you can go and talk to them.
Well, Chair Slater and members of the committee. You'll recall that back in, well, sometime in March, approximately, this would be in a initiated discussion about the twenty-six budget, the BIM, all the related costs and so forth. So what we do, we issue the requests to the various divisions that are involved. Such as in this case, insurance, which is DGAS. The chapter of funding, which including that DCD, you know, the controller, obviously. And EPM, the HR, so it all comes together like that. And so on March twenty-fourth, the committee should remember that a work session was held on the BIM at that time. Because we had generated a lot of markers from the various programs. And the committee essentially was okay with most of it. Not all of it, but most of it. And obviously, there's gaps.
Hey, Mr. Viall, I, I, I just asked, when did you notify DGAS that they needed to provide the rates to use, that you'd have the correct information given?
In March.
In March, so. So colleagues, I just spoke with Ms. Lowell, and she said the BIM is a regulation, that they're essentially writing, we can't do an administrative swap out. So I don't know if you guys know research for five minutes, or if people wanna give us a bit of management features or.
A monitoring hammer, okay. So what I think is since we're on a timeline, it's four forty-five. This information was not provided, we do this every year. Our only option now, you know, the vision director, nobody's here. If we, you know, if we pass it, then I think the difference should come out of this division's budget. And come out as the personnel of who should have provided this. So I think that's what we could look at, either a budget modification, or you could just red flag this. And if we're the oversight of this particular aspect, then we could change it. Because the program has to be responsible for their part of the BIM. Because it appears that every program is gonna have to use that rate to put in their budget forms. Or else we should just include all of this in a fixed cost. I mean, we're not relying on general services. I just need the rubber stamp, rubber stamping every year. That's why they're not doing facility maintenance, and now we're dealing with the insurance. They have an eighteen percent expenditure on facility maintenance, that's not easy. There's just like unacceptable, so. I think it's working with not only this committee, but HES. They have to be responsible. We have to understand what are these chronic challenges. And they're actually a program, I believe last year, we saw a huge amount, an increase of their revenues. Like what they generated or something, I remember it was multiple millions of dollars. But I think we need to really have someone that maybe asks to audit the general performance audit. And figure out what's going on in terms of why we're not getting this information. So that's where I'll be comfortable just moving forward and having the division incur this cost, the rate increases, and if it increases, then they'll benefit, I think, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? There are nothing? Yeah, it is. I think HES has authority to include certain things, like motor vehicles, buying president vehicles, it's in this. Legislation under that. Literally did, it's in the legislation.
That was an unmet need.
Increase the voter rate for people, fourteen million dollars to authorize the money. Okay, so I think right now, that's a recommendation. I don't know exactly how we legislate it into the BIM. It just had to be an hundred thousand plus understanding.
So they could document it, the program, if there's a rate change.
Say any rate change that is greater than what's in the BIM will be incurred by General Services. Need to do that. What if it's millions of dollars? That's things like, I'm not sure. I just, I don't know. How we practically would do that, without the data.
What is it, a bombist, whatever you say?
I sent, I sent a memo out on April sixteenth to Sean and Dale for the insurance premium. And I've heard that for the committee, that was because he was not being responsive to O and B's first request back as March, so I.
Okay, we'll figure it out with him, what we do.
You said. So I just want to ask for a question. Someone yelling at them right now? Rodney, Chair, Val, and Carlo? Do you guys contact them? And they're still like, has it been five, ten minutes?
Like, what's the delta from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
So if you want to leave just note.
Why isn't she?
You didn't change it, right? No, so it is last year.
Yeah, so it's last year's time. I don't know. I guess I would say, let's find out what happens. Because I haven't budgeted. If they come back and say it's less, benefits everyone. If they say it's more, then this is all planned, so. I can think of a good way to do it, but I just think we're, everyone here has done their job to, to accept that they can. We've all scheduled our schedules, you know. And to me, it's inappropriate to ask you to change all of your schedules to come back tomorrow, Monday, December. Well, we can't meet tomorrow unless we're gonna meet at six P M. Great, five P M.
So, okay, I'm gonna move on.
The chair recognizes a motion from Delia Crowder and Ms. Toddie, please read and I'm next to her.
You had that?
Yes.
I'm just still being, what is that? I'm just thinking of all the people here.
Vice Chair, this is Amendment Number Three to let section number zero zero five nine dash two five one, page two, line twenty-one, page three, line twenty-two. Delete three million one hundred sixty-nine thousand and insert thirty-three million five hundred one eight eighteen eight eight six. Two, page two, line twenty, insert new paragraph E as follows. At E, the Office of Management of Budget has provided the fixed cost program allocation totaling thirty-three million five hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars attached as exhibit E. Three, add new fixed cost program exhibit as updated by O and B. Four, page two, line twenty-eight, insert new paragraphs E and F as follows. E, the Budget Finance Committee and the Navigation Council will consider unmet needs as part of the FY twenty twenty-six budget upon recommendations from the Oversight Committee. Input from the public hearing scheduled for June twenty twenty-five and recommendations are from the branch chiefs and other sources as may arise throughout the budget process. F, the controller has prepared a memorandum identifying permanent fund income of eighty-eight million six hundred eighteen thousand, notable for FY twenty twenty-six, attached as exhibit G. Five, page two, line nineteen, and make the additions and deletions indicated below. Strike through one hundred eighty-five million, inserted two million, three hundred eighty two million, two hundred thirty-eight million, eight hundred thousand. Six, page two, lines twenty-seven, insert new lines as follows. Navam Nation Police Department, missing murder indigenous persons, unit victim advocate, five million. Somebody used deployment for FY twenty twenty-six, one million, Navam Nation homeowner, support fifteen million, audits two hundred thousand, veterans hardship payment, three million, Navam Ecology, the Center of Disease Disease Service Software, one million nine hundred thousand, Navam Nation Higher Education Fund, twelve million, four hundred thousand. Judicial Branch Repair Maintenance and Contractual Services, three hundred thousand, seven, page two, lines twenty-eight, make the additions and deletions indicated below. Total strike through one hundred eighty-five million, insert two hundred thirty-eight million, eight hundred thousand. Eight, at page three, line seven, insert new lines as follows. Navam Nation Police Department, missing murder indigenous persons, unit victim advocate, five million. Summer Youth Deployment for FY twenty twenty-six, five million, Navam Nation Homeowner Support, fifteen million, audits, two hundred thousand. Veterans perfect payment, three million, Navam Ecology Center, Disease Service Software, one million nine hundred thousand. Navam Nation Higher Education Fund, twelve million, four hundred thousand, Judicial Branch Repairers and Maintenance and Contractual Services, three hundred thousand. Nine, page three, lines eight, make the additions and deletions indicated below. Total strike through one hundred eighty-five million. Insert two hundred thirty-eight million, eight hundred thousand, ten, update totals on page two, line twenty-seven, and page three, line eight, throw up that all members made at the Budget Finance Committee, eleven, renumber these succeeding paragraph sections and exhibits as necessary and appropriate, and the Office of Legislative Services, Office of Legislative Council, author recommend technical edits, including calculations, adjustments to this legislation, and exhibit to implement the Navam Nation Councils, and ten, this amendment, you appreciate the existence and language, any other amendments which language will be confronted to this amendment. Vice Chair, remember, is a budget price for me, that is Amendment Number Three, right to the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Todd. The chair will, the vice chair will entertain a second. A second for the other chair, we have to. Do you remember, is any discussion, questions on this?
Can you send that thing? I didn't get it.
Why, can you make sure that she needs it?
Those two, it wasn't the same.
So you're gonna work with us?
That feature the audit. I was at the annual audit, not the annual audit.
That's the auditor generally.
Can you add that, other tribunal? That way it's clear.
Do you have Dominic and the other ones? Audits, what else?
Who is that going to?
That will set up, that will be like a business unit type there. So what, what?
See, that's a new one?
Yeah. It's also a place holder, too. It's like, well, we stated in the budget. But everything else is clear right there?
Not that everybody.
Okay. Really? Well, Delia Friday, you consent to having O H G, your general added, it's the audit, right? I love you, Doc. Okay, are those the insurance rates?
Yeah.
Okay, I see that.
I believe in vehicles. All right, F P D.
So this more or less?
For risk management, it's gonna be a little more, for our workers' comp, it'll be a little more, from the last two jigs, from my understanding.
Those more.
Yeah. Does the manager remember that? You want to add that into this comprehensive one?
Yeah, I mean, it'll make everything.
Well, we can do this for us, and then it was, it was more than it's time.
We have to read all those weird things and all that stuff, you know, succeeding paragraphs and all that, blah, blah, blah. This is swapping out the insurance rates, so directing us to budget to, the place where there's insurance for this stuff, if it's, size of year.
I'm just gonna.
You do, you do. Um, thank you very much, colleagues, for staying here. Everyone in the audience, uh, we just received the insurance rates from the Division of General Services. Um, thank you to the admonishing species to get this information. The rates are going to be included in this amendment, so I'm going to ask that. You know, obviously concurs that, so. Thanks for that. But I can offer anything, so.
I'll be.
Please, please.
Can you, um?
No, not yet, I, I want her to draft it, then you'll, you should, here, Rodney.
Oh, okay. But don't you need me to consent before she drafts it? Because you can't tell.
Well, you can't consent. Okay, but before you also did ask me to order returns.
Well, it's reminding you again. I'm, I'm.
Does anyone want to do this? There's five pages, two different memos. Does anyone want to hear from General Services, or do you guys are?
We could hear from them, we're doing them.
Uh, Chair, I'd ask that you recognize the Representative General Services, I'm sorry, sorry, I don't remember your name, um, but.
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director, we'd love to hear why this is so tardy and why you're holding up the entire Navi Nation budget process. I say that in earnest, I'm not being malicious.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
If you all were planning to be smart.
I want to thank you for our deputy, um, Director, Division Director, who is here to, I can raise into the Budget Finance Committee. I do want to note that Mr. Dale didn't ask O M B when these notices were sent out, but he asked that yesterday. So I don't know what's happening at the Division of General Services, but there's some time to, Division of General Services is a provider, sponsor. But Mr. Thomas, he is here to see it all go down, bye, all right?
All right, thank you, Chair. Um, my name is Marcus Yasi, I'm Deputy Division Director of General Services, and I do apologize for submitting these insurance rates at the last minute. Um, from here on out, I believe these, um, rates, uh, revenue projections were emailed to each of the programs. I'm not too sure if it was O C or O M B who emailed them, but I just received notice one, five minutes ago, that I was supposed to be up here, so I came in. Um, but on my end, we are providing the risk management program insurance rates here. This here is one of the feasibility study, actually, I report, um, my best on those ones. And this is to be included in the budget instruction manual. Um, item one, if you look at the memo, it does give the list of the auto physical damage for each of the vehicles, so they are listed there. If we compare it to the BIM. At the BIM.
That document.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Deputy Director, yes. I just wrote your last name. We need you to email those copies to Kristen Roll, Lowell, Rodney, Tom, so send those, and then they'll show you the real posters here. I mean, have you submitted the copies to Don McAnalb? They have them now? Okay, because they need that for inclusion in the actual BIM. They're going to have to modify it, just. Okay.
Okay, I will, I will do that. Um, so just going over that there, the rate, usually it's big increase depending on the vehicle, so they decrease that one. When it hit increase on that one with an item line. Um, item two is the property value here. On that one there, is it the, it is twenty-nine cents rate per thousand value with the deductible of fifteen hundred, and the same for the contractors. Um, general liability is also up here as well, at a hundred dollars, um, third period. So everything is there, bookish summary as well, is an item four. And then the attachments that show for us to be included. So that will vary is the workers' compensation, our risk management program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yasi. Um, colleagues, I just need to bring to your attention that five oh two P M, we'll send out the updated amendment. I'm pulling it up right now, and. I would like you to direct you to paragraph eleven. You also manage your budget. Is directed to replace the insurance rates in the FY twenty-twenty-six budget instruction manual with the five-page document provided to the Budget Finance Committee on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. So on the record, we know that Mr. Yasi has provided that document to us, and if anyone would like to consider a modification, they may do so, but then now it's going to be no less, you just say, you know. So the floor is open. Okay. Uh, and Deputy Chair will be asked.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a modified amendment, as before the committee. Are there any further questions or discussion related to the amendment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to, uh, voice both. Chair Parrish, I vote.
Okay.
I know if you have Mr. Yasi, that's the beginning. Thank you. Hope this three votes free.
Is this yours?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Here, we're in the middle of a vote, um, and I apologize if you got distracted with our legislature. Tell you how to go screen, tell you how to do it. Tell your party to screen, tell your, let's you ask you how you vote.
Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, we have, uh, five favors here, approach, sure, I'm really. Yeah.
Yeah.
Number three passes.
Vice Chair Slater, can you?
Yeah.
Vice Chair, can you just state for the record that you also included workman's comp, because I won't be on the line without asking about that.
Yes, so for the record, this includes the workman's comp information, so that's a memorandum, I believe, from, uh, O M B, U G S, and that. It also includes the memo that she asked aside as well, for the insurance rates for the vehicles. So. Um. Yes, we think too much, and I might ask. Insurance rates. Okay, well, it looks like you got away from, sorry, not remembered all, oh, I thought it did, yes, but, oh, no. Voter be able to review board, is that under your purview? Okay. Um. Who's the, who's, who's in charge, administratively, is it, who is in charge of fleet?
In charge of fleet would be, um, Division of General Services, fleet management is under. Uh, Division of General Services oversees fleet management, and Raymond Holian is the department. Um, the, uh, M B R V board is over, um, they're, we're, 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 we're representatives each other, right?
Yeah. All right. Uh, can I, would you honor this request from you right now, if you could get me a list of authorizations for tank complete vehicles, the vehicle with the names that are authorized?
Uh, I can bet if the request for, to Mr. Holian, and certainly I want to work with the chair.
Okay. Because, I mean, this is coming from the Superior Legislature, the Leadership Authority, so there shouldn't be anything crazy there. But I want to ask for that, ideally by the end of next week, and I can put it in writing, but I don't need, because you're his boss. Uh, committee members, the floor is up, and thank you for indulging on that request. We have three amendments to the legislation, any further discussion or questions on legislation? Fifty-nine, twenty-five.
Close. Maybe?
Um, but.
Hearing none?
I don't know.
Does anyone, Chair, do you desire a second reading?
No.
Okay, committee members, we can move forward and vote on legislation fifty-nine, twenty-five, as amended by the three amendments. Thank you to all the participants here. Chair Parrish, I vote.
Okay.
Chair Parrish, read. Delegate Norman McGee, vote screen, delegate Sharon Yasi. Delegate Sharon Yasi, read. Delegate Friday, how do you do? Delegate Friday, you go to screen, delegate Lester, yeah. Twenty-two, agree. But five favors here are closed, vice chair not voting. Legislation fifty-nine, twenty-five passes as amended, thank you very much, Chair, for putting this on your shoulders, and Chair, and this will. Thank you for not pulling my chair out, do you? Any other questions? Or do you want me to complete this round?
Yeah, sure.
Come on, let me, let's wrap this up.
Wait, my fair.
Uh, Chair Parrish.
Vice Chair Slater, uh, thank you for sharing the Budget Finance Committee meeting, I'm very, and I appreciate, uh, members of the Budget and Finance Committee for their, for their work and diligence, especially when it came to the work session, and you appreciate the collaboration between the legislative branch, executive branch, judicial branch, and our advisors at O M B, O C, um, Ferris, and all of the various individuals who contribute to the discussions. So if you want to extend my appreciation to all the budget officers who are listening on the phone, with the main Sam, this Tom, this Tony, this Sosi, also, um, all of those that are back. I think Miss Francisco, I don't know if Miss Francisco is still here, but thank you, Miss Francisco, Miss Tom, and, uh, and we all. Um, Chair Rosetta, I'd like to offer a motion for a directive to the Office of Management and Budget. And my, um, directive to the Office of Management and Budget, direction of conversation that I had, and I had a question on to the Office of Management and Budget regarding the pay study, uh, this, pay study allocation in FY twenty-five, FY twenty-four. Uh, both budgets, uh, that came out of this committee where we allocated money for a pay study. And it was my impression that the pay study dollars went to, were distributed, so that a study could be utilized for all Naval Nation employees, for the three branches. Um, but it comes to my understanding that, that there are two separate studies, um, and I, I don't know the extensiveness of what Miss Toddie's report is, um, and we have yet to know what that full report encompasses, but it's my understanding that the judicial branch has to complete their pay study, and is, is, uh, is asking for about eighty thousand dollars, but, um, to be proactive, they, they had a inquiry to Miss Toddie to see if they could access the current allocation at FY twenty-five to spin down those dollars, because as you know, the pay study, um, allocation was only at a thirty percent expenditure rate, but, um, my thought is that if they, the judicial branch would like to access those dollars to increase the expenditure rate, and we've already allocated those dollars for the same intention, they just have different, uh, vendors, then, then why not? Because it's for a pay study regarding Naval Nation place. So, members of the committee, I'd like to offer this directive to the Office of Management and Budget, it was emailed out, it's in a memorandum format, but the directive language is, um, the motion is to direct the Office of Management and Budget, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget shall cause a new business unit number to be issued to the judicial branch on matters relating to the general wage adjustment for the fiscal year FY twenty-six budget instruction manual, and to provide an updated report to the committee on these matters in the fourth quarter. Um. So this is a directive for them to take a look at, when we take a consideration for the comprehensive budget, that when we allocate the dollars for FY twenty-six, oh, sorry, now, now I know two different things.
Yeah.
The cost and pay study, that, that question is an administrative question, so let me backtrack. So I, they're working that out with Ms. Toddie, um, the judicial H R, and then also the O M B, so I don't have language yet for that. Um, so let me backtrack to the language in this, that was a part of the discussion and questions that I had, but, sorry. This directive that I'd like to offer to the Office of Management and Budget is that there would be a separate business unit for general wage adjustment for the judicial branch to access. So the reason why is, um, as you know, both the judicial branch, Miss Gracie to Toddie, come before budget finance, and there's just a back and forth between the committee, and, and I don't think that's necessary or appropriate. So I feel that this directive to the Office of Management and Budget to create a business unit separate for the judicial branch's general wage adjustment. Um, and for the FY twenty-six budget should resolve that, um, so that they can, can, uh, utilize those funds and not go to receive, Miss Rece to Toddie for, um, the allocation of general wage adjustment. So let me clarify, my motion on the floor is to direct the Office of Management and Budget, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget shall cause a new, create, cause a new business unit number to be issued to the judicial branch on matters related to the general wage adjustment for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget instruction manual, and provide an updated report to the committee on this matter, and this was a collaboration between, um, O L S and the members of the committee, that's my motion, I understand.
Any other discussion or? Questions, sir? Uh, Chair, pardon me.
Uh, yeah, yeah, so it's two issues combined, so my understanding is, let's go back to the pay study, I thought that's F R F, what did? So I don't know why the committee has to take any action, if there's legislation that gives out authority to the controller to review F R F projects, and then as long as it's part of the eligibility, so that question can be answered. I appreciate this memo, but I also, I cannot support this memo, because time and time again, it is not this committee's responsibility to manage communication and collaboration between judicial H R and Naval Nation Executive Legislative H R. So, um, I feel like this is enabling, um, individuals who are probably some of the highest paid employees on the Naval Nation. Um, I would rather see, instead of a directive, like, a condition of appropriation, or a vote of incompetence um, in their budgets, if they're not able to come to the table and, um, fix the issue regarding the J, the general wage adjustments. I mean, I know we've received over two reports on this, I think I could say the business unit number is a, I don't know, six, three, seven, one, or seven, zero, as a whole being from the continuing resolution, um, so I, I appreciate, but the time and energy, Chair, that you had to spend on this, the time and energy from our Office of Legislative Council, time and energy from the Office of the Controller. It's just, it's just frustrating. And so, um, I'm not going to support it, because I don't think that the committee should have to continue to, to, these demand keys. And, um, I don't know, if there's like a personnel write-up, or if they're political appointees, but if, you know, that's job duties. We basically tell them to do their job, so I appreciate it, um, I, for myself, is what I'm saying. It, it's the employees that are suffering because of the inability of these two programs to work together. And, uh, that's what people could reply, get Mr. Toddie, because if you could, I'd rather work with Legislative Council than, on what's going to be a solution, instead of directing them to work together, because this is the second time that this has been brought before the committee, and I'm not their manager. But I do review budgets, and I will look at what are some possibilities, if the two entities cannot work together to get a general wage adjustments out to their appropriate, um, employees, thank you. So it's not a question for, there's a question on the art phone, please go, for the P study, can you?
Okay, I, I guess it's conversation.
I, I don't need to hear from the person.
I just want to ask, Chair, your, your whole point here is to create a business unit, so that in the budget setup, O M B would somehow calculate all the H R stuff, or their G W A increase, so that's the core, that's not the basis. Their G W A increase, so that's the code. That's not the base test.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the pay study.
Alright, that's the look from over here.
Two, it was two different.
For the for the general wage adjustment. Or say for FY twenty-six. And mechanically right now. Everything comes through H R.
Why are we holding up the budget on this matter?
Okay.
This is like four thousand jobs that you're holding up right now.
Okay, so is there a second to the directive?
Vice Chair Slater.
Yeah, do you want a second, Chair? Not hearing a second to the directive, so forgot.
Unacceptable. I'm going to leave.
The other thing I'd say is, you know, you've mentioned as a directive, you've also.
But the plan of their plan of operation doesn't support the judicial branch.
Yeah. So that's why I was like, why do we have to do it if it's implicit in that they have your own H R responsibilities and O M B supports that.
O M B is asking for the directive.
Why do you need the authority to do it?
We're not even giving them the authority. The directive is a directive.
Yeah, but why why do you need a directive? What what's prohibited you from doing this?
Mr. Yell asked for the directive so that could be on the record, so it'd be separate.
Okay. I I I said, okay, Dominic, it's a. Committee members, yeah, is your briar if you want to support it or not? I don't think there's anything that prevents setting up a good business here. You have a legislation that authorizes human resources functions over at the judicial branch. If you have a plan of operations for a division of human resources. That supports the executive legislative branches and presumably the business unit authority to support each of those functions as they're related to the personal laxity. Are included in those. I'm not sure we need to. But I understand, Chair, every second. I'm going to do a second call. Third call. We can work on some other alternative options. So with that said, committee members, we're on item eight, most of the meeting announcements.
Is the pay thing, um. Is a pay scale, um, part of our. That was my.
You were talking the way.
The weight study. I thought that was the first thing you mentioned.
Yeah, but that's not included in the directive.
We're, we didn't assume the directive. I mentioned a question of.
Okay, so that's second. Okay, so I I'd like you to restate that because we're fast to drive.
Okay, thank you for having. So there was a few things in that request, but one of them was the pay study of my understanding. Was there a question on the pay study, Chair? Do you have a question on the pay study to get the remaining? The remaining amount to judicial? Is that one of your?
I just stated that they were resolving it, so that was that was the update to the committee.
Okay, sure.
They're 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 contribution.
O M B, yes.
Yeah, we can invoice them your time. You shouldn't be working on this.
Uh, Justin, I just want to say, you know. The president has asserted his executive control over the office of management budget. One, one thing he could do to work with his fellow branch chief is to direct, he could direct them to issue his business unit. And. You've all heard that we concur with it happening. We're just not going to waste the legislative time. Committee members, uh, we are on number eight, political meeting announcements adjournment. Any announcements? May six is our next meeting. Anyone who's listening on the line, I requested to add an item from. A group called Community Financial Something or Other. And they provide banking services to unbanked populations. I think I've seen like a sixty percent figure for unbanked on Navo, which. Nationwide, I think it's three or four percent or something like that, so. I just want them to give us some info and then if anyone here knows non-traffic or other groups, that's definitely who they work with. If they can listen in at that meeting, just connecting these players and seeing how we could help them. They're totally online, um, and their partner is U S Bank. But I think it's a way to overcome some of the New York customer anti-money laundering laws and. The, uh. The the physical address issues that I'm sure E D S and D C are going to overcome very soon, even on one. Any other announcements? May six is here. Norman has a tea time tomorrow day there. See you us in there. The vice chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion from W G A. Uh, in a second from Delia Lester Yadi, all favors say aye. Fantastic post, hearing none. Five favors zero opposed, but sure.